It is six o'clock. I'm gonna call the Selective Meeting to Order. It is Monday, October 4th, and it, like I said, six o'clock. So, if I could have somebody request a waiving of the reading of the-
So moved.
Waitman seconds.
Wrong favor.
Aye.
Waitman aye.
We will start with the pledge.
Pledge is-
To flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on my land, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal.
Thank you. Do you have any public comment today?
You're gonna do the-
Warrant.
Warrant.
You wanna do the warrant before public comment?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I guess it's in all that. Alright, we'll do the Treasury Warrant 22W7 and Jay Roll 22PW7. We have a motion.
So moved.
Waitman seconds.
Any comments? Roll call vote.
Block aye.
Benoid aye.
Waitman aye.
And Nichols aye excluding any COA wages. And next is approval of the minutes from the 23rd, September 23rd meeting.
So moved.
Waitman seconds.
Any comments?
Just for clarification, this was just for anybody watching. These were the minutes from the special meeting that we held on the Thursday to do the fund transfers and some other adds and ends, just for everybody.
Alright, you have a roll call?
Block aye.
Benoid aye.
Waitman aye.
And Nichols aye. So again, we'll just look, is there any public comment, anybody? Good game to see.
Over the grill, Roland. The thing that I brought up and left off, I'm sorry, I didn't know you had a meeting going at the time, but about the road, Ridge Road. I feel that fifty years ago that we stopped using that road. And for that length of time, the town had the ability to collect Chapter 90 money on it. But it was supposed to have been closed. And I don't know, it was never given a reason why they voted, no, the reason to vote it down, you know, to stop it. I feel that because it's gonna cost so much money, and if a developer wants to use it or whatever, there are ways of getting around, or let the developer create the fixing of the road. But I don't wanna see the town spend money on a road that's been vacant for over fifty years. And I don't know if Joe was kidding when he said a million dollars to fix that road, but no way in heck do I want this town to pay money on that road. I just don't see it got back onto a ballot and taken off, abandoned. It's been abandoned for fifty years, so let's get rid of it.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Is anyone using the road now?
No, there was a tree in the middle of it.
So there's nobody using the road now?
No.
So-
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Are you familiar with what happened at town meeting? That, cause they required us to remove that tree and to do some repairs to it, right? The, because it's a town road.
Because of the town road.
And they wanted access to it. And then it was also a matter of emergency access.
Also says houses, there's no houses on it?
No houses.
But it's a town road, and there is properties that, you know, individuals own.
So you could cut through that road for emergency purposes? Is there some value of the road?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, it's just, it's just a town road that was blocked, so I guess we were-
I'll check with Joe on it, and we'll talk about it. I just, I don't know that much about it. So I'll talk with Joe. I have not heard of anything to fix the road, so I'm not sure there's an issue here other than if town meeting said it's supposed to be open, then we'll have to look at that. Because we're supposed to follow the directions of the town meeting.
You can't get through it. You can't get through, you cannot drive from there through to Princeton because it's all gated off by the reservoir.
So then, so that, as far as I'm concerned, it's already in theory closed from what we're hearing.
Well, there was somewhat of a debate on this before, that what we would be required to do.
That's what I, this is, for clarification, this is that, a piece off of Ridge Road. It's not-
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not, not on my, my road. This is off of Ridge, the old brick station road. Yeah. I don't, I didn't think that was-
No, no, oh, I got the wrong road, sorry.
You're on Lover's Lane.
Yeah, I'm on Lover's. Dreaming, dreaming.
Keep, keep it up because that's where I remember your father the most. Mowing for the town.
Give me a call tomorrow, and I'll talk with Joe, we can figure out what's going on.
Alright, thank you very much.
Anything else? We don't have anybody on Tamika, right? Does anyone?
I don't have a comment, nope.
Okay. Alright.
So, sorry, just to get Carol a little bit caught up. I think that we talked about that in the winter or early spring or something. I think there's, it's a part off of Ridge Road that is not really open, but there's potential developer that might want it, and that was all the back and forth, apparently, right? And then stuff has still been working kind of behind the scenes. Joe's been working on it and everything, it sounds like, so-
Yes, yeah. And the property is under 61A. And so it'll have to come before the town too, so. At the Air Commission, we've been talking about it, so just heads up on it.
Okay, thank you.
So I just, I guess, I'm just wondering if Joe was speaking about the other part of Ridge Road? Cause I know I looked at property on the building, and I'm like, that is a road.
I'm not sure he's speaking about any of it, to be honest with you. But I'll check and find out what's going on, I'll see.
Sounds great.
Was the tree ever removed, Dick?
Yes.
Oh, it was, okay. So that something's been done there since the discussions, okay. Alright, uh, see. Next, we have department heads, we have Chief Knight.
Through the chair, if you don't mind, if I can roll in the Central Tree and the ambulance all into the-
Does anybody have, what, does anybody have any problems with taking those out of order?
No, no problem.
Permission granted.
Thank you. Okay, uh, thank you for having me this evening. I was last here early August. And I've asked to come back this evening primarily for the ambulance grant, and I'll give you an update of where we are for the end of third quarter for the Fire Department. As of September 30th, our calls of service, we've increased 4% over this time last year, which is a huge number. But it's still a steady increase that we're seeing year over year, the increase of calls. Severity calls have been tremendous. Significant more vehicle accidents with serious injuries, to overdoses and mental health issues. Suicides, things of that nature have been ramping up, unfortunately. So we are keeping track of that and trying to figure out what the underlying causes are of some of these things. We're working with the Police Department on that as well. Our Public Safety Open House will be held Sunday, October 17th, on Sunday, from 10:00 to 2:00. High-power vehicles have gone through the DOT inspection, our annual inspection with the assistance of DPW. A few minor issues that have been taken care of this week for service. Other than that, everything is up and running and running smooth for the winter, so we should be good to go. On FEMA updates, as you know, we talked about the CARES funding closing. Everything has been submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. It was a very large document. That was done in August, and we're pending the reimbursement. Should be coming very, very quickly. Once that's done, we can do a full reconciliation with the Department of Local Services to close that out completely. Anything that we received extra back in FEMA over and above what we were originally given for CARES will have to be reimbursed back to the state. The state has until December 31st to get that money back and spend whatever they have on their own projects. So we are working with that. We did the same with the FEMA clinics. All the federal reimbursements were submitted through the end of July because that's pretty much when we wrapped up our first, first round. Everything is going very well. We started at the beginning of the school year to focus on the middle and high school, the kids, to get vaccine availability at the schools. We worked with the Wachusett School District through the school nursing department to pretty much bring vaccine clinics right into the schools, and the parents can make appointments for the children to go to the nurse's office during the day to get vaccines. We will be finishing up this week with the second dose, so it's been three weeks now. So we'll be targeting that and getting that done. The goal for the district is to get the kids and the teachers to 80%, and then we're working very hard to get there.
Chief, did you use vans or something? How did, what did you use to, to bring out the vaccines in, was it?
It was just, we just pack in coolers and just go to school. We do everything there. And so all the nurses are there, we just utilize their staff. So it actually works out very well. So we did all six middle schools and high school in the district, so they're done. So that's working out really well. As you know, CDC and FDA have approved boosters for anyone 65 and over, and anyone that's in immunocompromised situation, they are eligible. We've been working with all of our community towns that we partnered with, and we are rolling out starting next Tuesday. And we're opening up specific days of the week for specific towns to make it very simple that Holden is this day, Rutland is this day. We're focusing on that, and information will start going out tomorrow to get everyone eligible to apply. By October 22nd, Friday the 22nd, we'll have finished all of these member towns for their 65-year-old population. And we will open to the general population, so anyone that hasn't got a first or second dose, they will be eligible to come in at any time. We'll continue right through of the fall. Our goal is to get everyone done by December 31st. That is our drop dead date as far as FEMA reimbursements as of now. We just got notification from the Department of Public Health wanting to know if we would be willing to do Pediatrics Kids 5 through 12. So we're working on that. We'll be meeting with our nursing staff on Wednesday to discuss that and the process that would entail to do, so we're working on that as well.
Is that all still gonna be in the library here?
Yes, yeah, we've worked with the library on that. And we've taken into consideration the festival of trees and some of the dates that she's already had booked. So that's already been worked into the schedule, so that's all set.
Thank you.
On MEMA updates, I'm just finishing up the draft of the Rutland Nursing Management Plan. It's been sent out to our community partners, that there are sections that they are stakeholders in for them to review. Once I have those reviews back, I'll be submitting the draft to the board for there, for all your review, and then for final sign-off. So hopefully we'll get that done this fall as well. Last time I was here, we were talking about budgets, and we talked about staffing reductions. And I guess the next day, some questions came out because I had advertised for more people after we reduced staff. So I just wanna clarify what that means is, so the Fire Department budget was cut. So the Fire Department and ambulance operates under two separate budget categories at town meeting. All the cuts happened on the Fire Department side, and that's where the staff reduction was. The advertised for position were on the ambulance side. So we're looking for more EMS, paramedics, EMTs to offset and backfill overtime due to shift vacancies, due to vacation time off requests, stuff like that. So we can reduce the overtime requests. So we've been moving forward with that. We have, we have a large pool of applicants. We read through them, we interviewed them all, and we made some offers to a handful of people. So they're working through the process now. And the paperwork's flowing to Becky and to Ron for signatures, so that's been moving forward. We also talked about wage rates for the on-call staff. I'll be putting together a plan for the fall. It's not gonna be, it'll be net neutral to the budget. We won't be asking for any more money. I just wanna be able to readjust. We should have extra money in the wage account due to the reduction to offset any increases in that as well. Finally, last year, been about eighteen months now, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the town of Okam on a five-year contract that we will provide ambulance services to their community. They pay us an assessment based on population each year. And then on, in turn, we bill the private health insurance that the people carry, and we collect that revenue as well. So here we are, eighteen months into it, everything's been working really, really well. We haven't had to increase staffing. We haven't been able, we haven't really had any significant increase because in our own system, we had the capacity to do a higher call volume without really impacting the people that we had. So part of that whole process was last year, when we did that, we inherited all of Okam's equipment. We inherited their ambulance, all their medical supplies, everything. And former Selectmen over here raised concern that we were inheriting a 2008 ambulance and all the issues that that may entail as far as maintenance and everything. So I took that concern, and I worked very hard. I applied for a federal grant and leveraged that information and leveraged the agreement that the town had between us and Okam on a regional partnership and sold it on a regional partnership with the town of Okam. That our level of service has now expanded to a larger population. With that, in August, we got the notification that we got awarded the $300,000 to replace that ambulance. We are one of 135 departments in the country that receive funding for this. So there was a lot of work, and we got it done. So the goal is, obviously, we have to match 5% of the federal grants. It cannot be, we cannot use any state or federal funding for that match. It has to come from local revenue of some fashion. I've been working with our town accountant. We're gonna utilize the Okam assessment that they're paying to the town because he did not count it as a local receipt this year. So there'll be an article at the Fall Town Meeting to raise and appropriate the money to match that, and the money is coming from Okam. So we will be replacing that 2008 ambulance. So basically, all of our ambulances now are just gonna shift. Our oldest ambulance that's housed here in towns in 2013 will now move over to Okam, and the two newest ones will be here in town. So that's where we're at. Part of the federal grant is if we deem, or if we argue that the vehicle is not worthy, it can't be traded or sold as an ambulance again. Because we basically sold the fact that it's not worthy for that. Because we've accepted no value, or we paid no value for it, we're gifting it back to Okam to replace their 1995 old ambulance that they used as a rescue truck. Just, you know, keep them, keep them going. We pretty much are utilizing the same specifications that we used on our ambulance we bought in 2018. So we're not paying for the additional engineering and all that costs again. So we're basically just duplicating what we have, it's just a newer model here. We've already talked to the manufacturer, they're on the federal bid list. So that's all covered as far as procurement. We've locked in the price, we've locked in the specifications. We're just waiting for your approval this evening to move forward. I did meet with CIPC two weeks ago, and this was part of the CIPC program because this vehicle, the 2013 that Rutland owns was on the capital plan to replace next fiscal year. So this all works out because the timeframe to build the new ambulance is gonna be anywhere from 12 to 18 months based on availability of chassis. And everyone's seen the Ford issues and Chevy issues and things of that nature. So that's really where the delay will be, is getting the chassis. So that's pretty much where we are on that. And finally, you've been made aware of the situation at Central Tree Middle School for the fire alarm system. That kinda came out of nowhere, and it got brought to our attention when we did the fire alarm system on the first week of school. When we did the fire alarm system, the fire alarms did not work. And it was quite concerning, and when we called the service company, they were like, oh, we knew, we knew about that. And they had a service, open appointment to repair it. So it was interesting that we were never notified that the system was down, and they allowed the kids to go back into the school. So we forced them to come out immediately to get it up and running. Got it up and running, because this happened on a Friday, so by Monday it was up and running. There's still some issues with it, and now we're being told they have to replace the entire fire alarm panel. Problem is, is the building was built in 1999, so it's the original fire alarm system in that building. So they're only proposing replacing the existing panel that's there. Nothing down the line, none of the smoke detectors, sensors, strobes, pull stations, nothing else down in the system, just the panel that's on the wall. Problem I have is this two, several problems. So the district has contracted with Johnson Controls, which used to be Simplex, to manage and maintain all seventeen school buildings, all their fire alarm systems. So they, they pay one contract fee for a big company to come in and maintain and service everything. They are not authorized to work on this system because the system is proprietary to another manufacturer. So anytime there's a system issue, they have to hire this other company to come in and fix the fire alarm system. Now, those type of repairs are all covered under their agreement. But now it's coming to replacement of a system, a large-scale system, in excess of $35,000. That's why it's being brought forward to us. And they're going to replace it with the identical system that's there. Problem is, the identical system that's there is three generations old, and the technology is not where it should be. And my concern is if we do that, we're potentially could have problems down the line, not only with an older model unit, but everything else that's in the field as far as the smoke detectors and all that, we're gonna be chasing problems thereon. The problem is, is the panel has to match what's out in the field. So they all talk to each other, they all communicate with each other. So we either have to put a new panel in that's two generations too old, or we have to come up with more money and replace the entire fire alarm system across the whole building. So that's a discussion that this board, Capital Planning, and the Finance Committee will really need to discuss. Because to me, what I'm seeing is the proposal they've given us is now gone through several hands. It's gone from the Edwards Fire Alarm System is the contractor that would replace it because they are the original manufacturer. And they're invoicing Johnson Controls, and then Johnson Controls is now gonna invoice us. So we're paying for a middleman here that has a potential markup of costs being passed on to us. So the question we really need to define is two things. If we come in as a town and choose to change the whole system, will one, Simplex, continue to honor their contract? Because now the system has changed, and they didn't bid on that system that we may or may not install. And two, can we go around Simplex and go directly to Edwards ourselves as the contractor? And as, as we are the, we own the building, and bid it directly with them? So those are some things we need to really figure out. So the proposal right now is $49,000 to replace the panel. And that's if they have to do it on nights and weekends with overtime. It's $44,890 if they can do it during normal business hours, school vacation week, things of that nature. So to replace the entire system down the line, everything to the state of the art new would be under $70,000. So we're almost three-quarters or two-thirds of the way there. So is it better just to bite the bullet and change the whole thing? So again, that's just something we really need to sit down, whether, you know, Ron, Joe, and I, with the facility manager from the school, really sit down and hash all these things out because there's some procurement issues, there's some contract issues with the district. But again, we have a lease agreement with the district that basically puts it in our lap, so do we drive the project, or are they driving the project? So again, that's the concern I have.
Well, I would think, you know, if our fire chief is recommending a certain thing, that I would think that would drive what's gonna happen.
Sure, a couple of, a couple of comments. Me and Seth have obviously had quite a discussion about this issue. The requirement, you know, I had already had to go back into the lease agreement between the town and schools for the leasing of the property. And that's where Seth is pulling out, anything over $35,000 is a responsibility of the town. However, it also says that the school committee is required to give us three estimates. So I asked Seth, I said, push back on them, if part of the three estimates, we can ask for a direct estimate from the company that already installed the older system. So we can get rid of that markup issue, because that should be one of the three quotes, so we can do that. So we're waiting for the three quotes to even find out where we're gonna be. And I guess Seth, I would ask you, are they giving us a full quote of the replacement of the system? And then the question that we have to ask them is, if we do replace the system, is it still gonna fall under their maintenance contract? Because that's, only they can answer that question.
Correct.
So they've gotta have that discussion and let us know how that works. But, but we will, and we're gonna continue, we have, and we're gonna continue to talk about this and try to figure out what their best route is for the town. And then the question is, where are we gonna get the funding for this? Regardless of which way we go, because both are right now over 35 grand, regardless of where we go. So we'll have to look at that, if that's, if that's a free cash issue involved, if we even have the time for that, or are we gonna do something else? But that's something we'll explore. I can't explore it until I know what the numbers are. So, so first and foremost, we gotta get the numbers from them, which I think they're in the process of creating.
Right.
So once we have a little bit more detail, we can report back to you what we recommend and how to go forward. I, I, right now, if you're asking me what I think, I agree with the chief to, given the numbers, we're probably better off replacing the whole system. But again, we gotta make sure they, they will take care of it once it's up and running. But I agree for that short money, we probably should do that as well. But we're still in this early stages of this, so we'll let you know once we have more details.
Yeah. Because in the last five years, we've replaced every fire alarm system in every town building in town already. It's just the schools that are left hanging out there.
Kim?
You mentioned that all of the seventeen schools talk to each other? Does this interrupt that at all?
No, no, so the, the schools don't talk to each other.
But the system-
The, the system, like, every smoke detector is addressable. So if one smoke detector goes off in a closet way down the hallway, we don't have to go look for every single smoke detector in the building. The panel, it will report back to the panel, tell you exactly where it is. So it's called an addressable system. And that way, it just makes troubleshooting much easier. So each individual stands on their own, they're independent on their own, and they are monitored independently. Johnson Controls has a service contract for all seventeen. And you'd be surprised, all seventeen buildings have different systems. You would think, if the district was putting a building up to bid, you would specify for continuity, certain things. But that was, again, electric subcontractor, low bid. That's what they put in, and that's what we got. So the system is up and running, fire alarm system works. The only thing that does not work, if you've ever been to Glenwood during the fire alarm during town meeting, you have a voice announcator that tells you, fire, you know, exit this way. The voice announcator is required in assembly-type facilities that meet a certain capacity. Because we use the gymnasium at Glenwood in a large capacity of 300, 400 people, potentially more, we fall in that assembly group. The question I have to the Fire Marshal's Office is, because this is an educational use for the school, can we restrict plays and school, large school functions that parents and people from outside are coming in until we can get the thing replaced? But as far as right now, the kids are fully safe, they're fully covered, everything is operating. And thankfully, it's the school-aged kids that are older and don't need that type of instruction as much as the kids in the first grade, things of that.
Have you looked at Naqog and Glenwood or Cape?
Yes. Again, Glenwood's the newest school, so that one's working very well. And Naqog was done when they did the addition renovation. So that was when that was done.
And just one more, has anybody spoken to the Terrible Action of Duty of Johnson and Services?
There's a lot of issues, there's a lot of issues with that. There's a lot of issues with communication between the school and us. When something happens, they, because what usually happens, Johnson Controls' first recommendation or first tells the school is, you need to get this done today, otherwise the fire chief's gonna close the school. And of course, that's what they hear, and they panic, and they just, you know. Not that we, again, it's, the system's up and running. But again, it's, you know, they're pushing that, you know, you need to fix this now, you can't wait, you know. So that's pretty much where we're at. So we're doing the best we can and trying to get as much information as we can. And then once we get it, we'll get it on to you guys.
Anybody else have any comments on that?
If, I, I assume that the kind of soundline systems, the smoke detectors and everything are similar to like our house smoke detectors that have kind of a lifetime-
Yes.
Ex- expiration.
Correct, yep.
And so if the panel went, I assume that we would probably be safe to say that it's a, what, twenty, thirty year, thirty-year-old building?
Yeah.
That they're pushing their expiration, so.
So usually, as a smoke detector becomes faulty, smoke detectors last ten years.
Yep.
So technically, they should be on their third smoke detector right now, coming up onto their third. So if the first ones were done at ten years and here we are now at twenty, are we going to be replacing every smoke detector in the building? Um, or are we gonna start having nuisance alarms? Because we're gonna have them start failing one at a time and we'll be chasing those. So again, it it's just, there's a lot of things. Is the fire alarm systems we put in all the town buildings, there's no part in it that's proprietary. Any electrician can go off to the shelf and buy a device and and install it. So we, because this building had a Johnson Controls system and we completely took it out, replaced everything when we did this building. Because anytime Johnson Controls walked in the building, it was a thousand dollars just to walk in the building. Um, and that type of cost, you just can't sustain. So, um, we're gonna look at that long term, what's the best we can do.
Thank you.
Well, kudos on the grant for the ambulance. Good job, that is, that's awesome, really appreciate your work on that. Um, does anybody have any questions regarding the ambulance?
I think, I mean, great work and great foresight to kind of see that that's all coming together. And, you know, it sounds like it helped Ocam get rid of their two thousand eight. Still, you know, so we have, everything is still progressing forward, so I think it's great, thank you.
Absolutely. So I'll be meeting with the finance committee later this week to discuss.
Good luck. If I can get a motion on the ambulance, accepting the grant.
I'll make a motion that the select board, um, approve the ambulance grant. I'm looking to see if there's specific work, the federal grant for an ambulance. Um, do, with authorization for the TA to sign any documentation.
And you have a second?
A second.
All right, any other comments? Rolf?
Rock Eye.
Benoid Eye.
Whitman Eye.
And Nichols Eye. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
And two. All right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I, on Friday, I sent out a four-page kind of update to all the board members. I'm just gonna touch on some of the key things. I don't wanna keep you an hour on this. But I did apply for a community compact IT grant, which is a competitive grant process. For a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to install cameras and IT equipment at the three schools in Rutland. In order to make sure that we have protection for students and staff. Uh, this is one of the higher grants under the community compact, they can go up to two hundred thousand dollars. I did talk to them and I'm hoping that we get this grant, I think it'll be a tremendous benefit to our town. Amp Solar Project, Amp has reached out today again, they're no longer talking about us operating the solar project. Uh, they're gonna cut the land order and consider buying the land and then potentially donating the land to the town. And then we would have a lease agreement between them and the town. And at the, and effectively at the end, it would be a hundred percent tunnel land. So that's a positive thing and we would get the taxes from any pilot agreement that we brought forward. So I, now I think that is something that we should consider more than the past proposal, if it plays out. The Heights property, as you know, they hired a new engineering company. I'll be meeting myself along with the chairman of the RJAC. Uh, we'll be in our town plan, we'll be meeting with the new engineer tomorrow. Uh, it looks very, very positive. Last I've been told, the study for any continuation of land has gone very well. And things, uh, I think are moving forward in a positive way. Uh, we've been meeting town managers and administrators in our school district. We've been meeting to discuss the school budget, I think that's positive. I compliment the chairman of the committee, join us for our conversation. Uh, as that progresses, I'll be bringing more information to the board of selection for future consideration. The pavement management plan, the people in Stan Tech are in the field. Uh, they're expecting that to take about five weeks for that pavement management plan to be done. Uh, and once we get that done, of course, it will go to our capital improvement committee for future potential projects as well. Capital improvement committee, I met with them and we talked a whole bunch of issues. I really think it should come down to four components of that capital plan. The five-year capital plan, I already gave them, the facilities management plan that I gave them. And then next, the schools, I talked to the schools, I found out that the schools were not giving our capital improvement committee a five-year capital plan. Uh, they are working on one now, they plan on presenting it to our capital improvement committee sometime in November. That'll be the third component of the capital management plan. And then when the pavement management plan is done, that'll be the fourth component. So eventually, we'll have a full, whole town approach to capital improvement, which I think is gonna be very, very good. With that in mind, we're gonna be looking at two kinds of issues. We're gonna be looking at trying to deal with a facilities management study. I would like to prioritize capital improvements to buildings in terms of repairs, immediate needs of repairs. Uh, for anything we do in the fall town meeting. Uh, so I have Joe Buckley and I have been discussing that. I provided the four pages of, the pages of the immediate repairs that I did present to you guys as well. And we're gonna be looking and trying to prioritize that list for the capital improvement committee meeting with them. And trying to determine which projects we should move forward to try to get our buildings back up to speed. That's the short-term plan for fall town meeting. And I'll be trying to work with capital improvement committee on a longer-term plan, which is, uh, some of the larger capital type of items, potentially the parking lots of the schools. It took us a very serious look, I reviewed, spent most of today looking at the facility management plan. And and if you look at the parking lot at Town Hall in the annex, you'll see it's it's completely cracked, it it needs major overhaul. So that may be part of the project. The senior center, community center, there's parking lot issues there as well, libraries, there's parking lot issues there. So, you know, it could be that we eventually do a bond package, uh, and put out the voters for all the parking lots that need to be done. Uh, by doing them all, it's kind of a, a total view, we may be able to save money by doing the group. But but it seems that most of the town buildings have pretty poor parking lots. Uh, so that's something I'm gonna look at trying to package up. Uh, that will not happen until the summer, the annual town meeting is when we'd be looking at that. I'm gonna skip over things that you guys know about. Obviously, I told you guys and I can kind of keep you up to date with the Rutland sewer line issue. Uh, the important thing and the information I gave you is, um, the estimation of the twenty-six percent we've been talking about. Uh, that'll be used for next quarterly bill, which covers July first, twenty twenty-two through September thirty of twenty twenty-two. Now, Joe wanted me to make sure it was understood that that we've had a very heavy rainfalls and that some of that water is going into the pipes. So it may not have much savings there, well, savings from our estimate, but but it could be helpful in that the rates don't go up as a result of the water that gets into that system. But that's moving forward in a very positive direction, so we think that's good. Gravel roads, we've been dealing with some of the gravel roads, you've probably seen some significant increases, uh, improvements to a couple of the roads. Uh, the last one he's been, he's been working on is, um, and again, this is one of my pronunciation errors, but I think it's called Saskowana. Uh, road that was recently done. Uh, I'm not sure if he's finished yet, but that road, it was, I think, the worst of the gravel roads. Uh, so those roads, what he's doing is crowning those roads and then, uh, using a, um, a roller to to tighten them down so they stay and adding the gravel to it. Uh, that road, uh, and others we're discussing with the school system. Uh, the amount of buses that are going on some of those roads, six to eight times a day buses are traveling those roads. And we wanna work with the school system to find out if there's a way we can reduce that number. Because the way those buses do significant damage to those gravel roads. So, uh, we're in communication, we're expecting to have another, our, our following conversation should be about a week with the, uh, school business manager and their maintenance, or their facilities management guy. And hopefully, we can figure out some way to take some pressure off of those roads. Contracts, you're gonna be doing, uh, the CM Geeks contract tonight, Pama Dosit Water Project. Uh, we finally, we put that out the bid, which is actually really fast, because you know that's part of the American Funds Act money. The low bid was five hundred and seventy-three thousand, one fifty-two, fifty-three. Uh, we are sending out a letter this week to the company who got that bid. Um, and you will see a contract coming before you. It is at the next meeting or the following meeting to vote on to get that water line project, uh, moving forward. Uh, one of the big things that we had did recently is myself and and the treasure collector in the town accountant had a meeting with S and P uh, to look at ratings. Uh, what happens is, you recall, during the budget process, we decided to refinance some old debt. And lower interest rates to save the taxpayers money. Um, part of that re-debt, uh, was into a larger bond package. It, uh, was already approved for the water sewer bond. So, uh, because rates are low, we're able to save money in doing that. Uh, we had to go through and explain to them, you know, what the fiscal condition of his run-in and what's our free cash and what's our stabilization fund. All the information they can have to make a good business decision about loaning us money. So we feel that meeting went very well. In another week and a half or so, they will call us and give us our new rating. I know, truthfully, I don't expect it to change, but it it it's not gonna change for the worse either. Uh, but we'll see what happens, but I thought the meeting went really, really well. Uh, and it was, uh, great with Dan and and Becky's being part of it. Uh, on the cover twelve, I'm gonna be meeting with some, uh, area farmers and the congressman's office to discuss supporting our local farmers on a host of issues that have been raised as a concern. I call that meeting because, quite frankly, I'm I'm not excited about the way the federal government has been treating some of our local farmers. And we really need to have more federal government support instead of, I'm gonna call it harassment. I mean, they need to to be a lot better about helping small farmers move forward. So I'm gonna do my best to work with the congressman and federal state agencies to see if we can get better support, uh, for those local farmers. And lastly, uh, as you know, uh, and I wanna give kudos to our senator representative. Uh, we've talked in the past about how they got the money, both for the prison camp issue and for the roofing, uh, the wood building. Uh, that money, I finally got, again, thanks to Senator Goby. I finally got a letter from a state agency saying that, in fact, we got the grant money so we can move forward on that project. Kudos go to Joe Buckley, who, uh, instead of looking for area bidders, which would, would have took a longer period of time, we're going into winter. Uh, got a contract off the state bid list, so we don't have to go through the longer procurement process to move that forward, that project forward. So our our goal is to get it, uh, that roofing on the building before winter hits and make sure we protect it against water getting into that building. So that's, um, the short four pages, at least, uh, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take it, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Uh, one comment on the parking, because, um, I know that you attended the finance committee meeting at the community center, so you saw the parking lot and the situation there. Carol and I participated, they had the leukemia walk on Saturday. Um, and it was, I'm also, I'm sorry, Alzheimer's. Alzheimer's. And, um, so, and and they also had soccer going on. And it was literally a mile of cars on the, on the main road and they were all parked all over the parking, all over the sidewalks. So we had seniors trying to do a walk, because they were walking from the community center down to the, the school. Um, the, the whole thing was, it was a nightmare, it was a mess. They were all over the backside, so that that extended parking lot and that whole situation really needs to be addressed in some other way. And this, and and the safety on that roadway, you can't, we can't have cars blocking all the sidewalks along that road. A lot of people walk and run and utilize that road, um, especially on weekends.
That's, Mr. Chairman, a lot of issues are relating to parking lots and stuff, there, there's a lot of, all frankly, almost every one that we have is bad. Behind the police and fire department is bad, the whole library has issues in there, Town Hall has issues there, the community center has issues. So I'd like to really group those together in one package and get them all done. But I'm also gonna be looking at, again, tying that into the school system, but I also wanna look at some other capital projects that need to be done. The roof at the, uh, community center has also reached its life, so we need to look at that issue. The windows are shot, uh, again, if you can read the facilities management study, the facilities are shot in that, or the windows are shot in that building as well. And the, and the vinyl siding is atrocious, it's just, there's all kinds of holes in it and everything else. So, uh, then you can look at the library, you look at the library, there's still water problems at the library, not the roof itself, but I don't know how to describe them, or sockets or whatever come out from the building, that needs work. We need to get some of the, uh, the bushes and things along the building, we need to cut those back away from the buildings. There's so much that has to be done, uh, on these buildings. Um, and it's one of the things we're gonna have to educate the public about, the importance of of protecting all of these buildings and getting them up to speed. So again, that's a bond package we have to put together, and then we have to educate the public as to why it's important to maintain these buildings. And then put it into a bond package that's, people can understand the cost and the reasoning for that. But but clearly, parking lots, I think, are, if you look at the dollar cost of all that, the parking lots are gonna be the biggest cost. I'm told that the, the parking lots at Naqog and and Oak, Center Oak, or Century, um, could be five hundred grand just for those parking lots. So we're talking some significant dollars, but the, the lots need to do it, otherwise they're gonna completely collapse and they'll be, they'll be absolutely horrible. So at some point, early money is better than late money, because it gets just more expensive as it goes along.
Leah, wasn't there like, wasn't there a plan to have additional parking for the soccer off of the school road? Isn't there a field that was designated for parking?
Yeah, there was an RFP, I think, awarded to the, uh, Rutland Use Soccer to put in soccer fields there. I think they were fun, working on building up fundraising and then COVID hit, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so, okay.
That's not by any means like a, be all, you know, an immediate fix by any means. But I do wonder if we can, um, try to encourage folks to park on the driveway from Glenwood, from the school up.
Right.
Uh, only on one side, because emergency vehicles are tr- tricky otherwise, but just, um, because it is tricky on Glenwood, um, driving or running or walking or anything, so.
Yeah, we need to find a way to discourage them from blocking the sidewalk, at least, because it, like you say, they're driving right up and, you know, people, you know, driving, you know, walking into the weeds and off the, off the road to get to it.
Mr. Chairman, just a last comment, I, I know I put a letter, uh, before all the select board members tonight. Uh, I've had a conversation with the town treasurer collector and the town clerk that's here about potentially, uh, just opening up the warrant tonight, adding it to the agenda and open up the warrant tonight. Uh, we're looking at town meeting dates and and there's a lot of thought to the November eighteenth. Uh, the town accountant and treasurer believe that's okay, but we're not locking in the date for that tonight. Uh, but we do wanna open up the warrant. Um, it's important that to have that town meeting date earlier than, frankly, I know there's been talk about December and everything else. But in terms of setting the tax rate, the treasurer really believes that late November is better for setting up the tax rate. But I would ask if if you're willing, just to have simply a motion to add the agenda, opening up the town warrant for the special time, or fall town meeting. Uh, and that's really all we need, and then voting to open up the warrant.
To put that on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, so you'd have to make a motion to add it to the agenda. See if that motion passes and have a motion, uh, to open the agenda, to open the warrant.
Does anybody have any other questions regarding that, or anybody wanna make a motion?
Sorry, I was just reading the dates quickly.
Again, we're not locking in that date tonight, but that's what the, at this point, that's what the treasurer and the town accountant are recommending.
What she's looking at, I, I just wanna say kudos to, uh, to Carol and and Karen and and the, uh, council on aging for the Alzheimer's Walk. They actually had a, a goal of a hundred and fifty dollars and they raised over eleven hundred dollars. That was their first attempt at doing that event.
That's a great goal, that's, that's a nice job, yeah.
So yes, they did a really nice job, so they're really happy with that, so we appreciate that.
Um, if I may, about the potential dates and everything, has FinCom seen the potential? I just know, it's, we haven't, I just wanna make sure that we're giving FinCom enough time to review anything, um, that we place. And I know sometimes it's hard when we're trying to backdate from an unknown date.
So the, the question is, we, I literally just got this today, so I haven't given the opinion, I gotta.
Okay.
I've talked to to Karen about this and generally, she, she's not quite as optimistic as I am or the town accountant is. Um, but the November eighteenth is the day that the town accountant believes, uh, he, I guess he's been working on free cash every weekend. It feels that we're gonna have it in time that we'll be able to, uh, establish projects and have that all ready for a November eighteenth date. Um, so he's the one that gets free cash certified, that's the key issue. Uh, again, I'm not asking you to set that date tonight, but the treasurer collector does feel that that date would be better for setting the timing of the tax rate. But that's not, again, we're not asking for that vote tonight.
Do you have any immediate concerns or comments, Karen, regarding us opening the warrant? Well, I mean, I know what your, your concerns are, but.
Yeah, but you leave the, you leave it open for two weeks.
Yeah.
So then you guys will be voting on it the week before, um, well, it depends, when would you guys be meeting? That's the thing, so I have to look back and see when you guys are meeting, because that would mean, if you open it tonight, it would close on the twenty-second, which means you guys would make the decisions on the twenty-fifth through the thirtieth.
Would you, do you think that that's?
You could probably manage it, depends upon how many things come in and backup and stuff like that, but yeah.
Anita?
I just wanted to point out that there isn't a timeframe for for closing the warrant. You can, you can open it and close it and, I wouldn't recommend it in three days, but there's nothing that says that it has to be open for for that timeframe. You just wanna make sure that especially all boards and committees realize that it's open and get the message out to the public.
And that would do, Mr. Chairman, so that, that's what we'll do tomorrow. I agree with the town clerk that it doesn't have to close in two weeks, it can go longer than that.
Or or shorter, you don't have to.
Or shorter, whatever. I don't think we're looking at shorter.
Well, well, Karen would rather shorter, right?
Well, the thing is, is that that, I mean, because you figure, you guys have got double meetings the next couple of weeks, we've got meetings the next couple of weeks. So just making sure that we got enough time to look at everything, because by the time you get all the paperwork in, it takes some time.
To, to, to add to that. To, to, to add to that, right, so I, I agree, and we're gonna take the time we need, because I, I need to know that free cash has gotta come in like the town accountant is saying it, because we need to look at what proposals the administration's gonna be making for what repairs. I say, I'd like to focus on repairs to buildings, and, and we have the repairs kinda laid out in the facilities management plan, but Joe's in the middle of prioritizing those now, 'cause I wanna make sure we have a good priority list of what we're gonna fix, ready to be, and depending upon what that free cash number is, how much we're gonna use. So, me and Karen will be talking about that, 'cause I, I'm clearly not gonna be proposing we use all of free cash for a town meeting, 'cause I wanna keep some in reserve, given our budget issue here.
I mean, I think it makes, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I think it makes sense to open it tonight if we, if the board's amenable. I was just trying to look at dates, because our regular scheduled meetings are the fourth, which is tonight, then the eighteenth, and then November first. So I feel like closing on the fifteenth is not even two weeks for, to get it to boards and commissions. That seems kind of quick for boards and commissions turn around, but then to push it, um, we wouldn't, our next regular scheduled meeting is November first, so would we push it then to like the twenty second and have a week where we might meet? I know we have unscheduled, like un, non-regular meetings scheduled already. Would we try to fit it in that week of the twenty fifth, so that that way or would we look at placing articles on the first? I don't know what the, you know, as chair is what you guys are thinking for timeline.
I, I would say, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I would say that, that, that I think we'll be making recommendations to you as it plays out as to the closing date, depending upon how it's going and wh- when the free cash comes in and things. So we would be adding our uh thought process in with you guys too, as to what it should, what the date should close.
So we can open it and we don't have to set a date of close?
No, right, that's, Anita said you can do it earlier or later, right?
Right, the reason is set.
Right, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure if when we open it, we had to set a date that we were closing and then we could extend it. I didn't know how it works, like.
Yeah, there's, there's really no MGL that, that dictates exactly what you have to do, other than you need to open and enclose.
And, and to answer the question, we, we would add meetings if we really, you know, if we need to, obviously, we'd be open to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And when, when we think it appropriate time, I'd be working with everybody to give a closing date that makes sense for the board, so.
With some notice, I hope, just to get to boards and commissions and everything.
Well, we're gonna put, I'm gonna put that out as early tomorrow that it's open, so I'm gonna pump that out right away tomorrow. While my department heads to all the board and commission shares that the warrant was open tonight, so we can move that process as quickly as possible. What I can't do is the, is the, the repair projects until I know what free cash is, although we're, we're gonna organize them, but what we're gonna do, we won't know until we actually have a hard knock.
So then I'll make a motion that we add, that the board add to our agenda the opening of the, um, special fall town meeting warrant for tonight.
So we have to add it and then make a motion, is it?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call?
Glock eye.
Benoid eye.
White man eye.
And Nichols eye?
So then I'll make a motion that we open the, um, warrant for the special, fall special town meeting um with a date of closure to be determined, and just with a note to please get it out to boards and commissions and department heads and everyone ASAP, please.
That's, that's process, doesn't have to be a motion, but that's fine. Just a normal process.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Glock eye.
Benoid eye.
White man eye.
And Nichols eye. Thank you, Leah. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments along? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we have a Walk to Remember charity presentation by Donna and Patty, information regarding charity walk in town for October seventeenth. So if you just enter uh your name and addresses and then close yours.
Excellent. Do you wanna go first?
Donna Verne, three sixty one River Road, Hudson, Mass.
Patty Anne Inwood, one Haven Hill Road, Rutland, Mass. And we just wanna say thank you so much for having us here this evening. I feel like I need to stand, 'cause that's what I do for a living, so I can see everyone.
Yeah, it's up to you, whatever.
Oh, fantastic, okay. So I just wanted to um say thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Patty Anne Inwood, and I brought Donna with me this evening, and we are part of Hope Lives Here. And Hope Lives Here is an organization that started right here in Rutland that helps people who are trying to um make their journey through loss. So both Donna and I have lost our sons, and we know how important it is to have people with you who have um experienced the same thing as you, who can look across the table and understand what you're going through to help you move forward and help carry your heart while you're not as strong um in those first few years of grieving. So I am actually the founder of Hope Lives Here. We started um in the library, and we're in our fourth year now. We uh have five meetings a month. One of them is all Zoom. We have about three hundred and fifty visits a year at the moment, which we're super proud of. So we are doing really amazing work in our community, and that was always our goal. So with COVID, unfortunately, we have been, we are only driven by donations, so we have been unable to do any fundraising. So when we did our strategy meeting in January, we knew we had to put all our eggs in one basket, and we decided to do the Walk to Remember, and Rutland has been amazing about supporting us on this journey. Uh, Chief Monica has been super supportive. The town department has been really incredible. Karen Cappucci at Glenwood has been very helpful, and we're hosting a five K Walk to Remember. It's perfect for our clients and our families, because they can bring their, um, their, their own community with them. We have two hundred and seventy-five people signed up at the moment and growing, I hope. Donna, do you wanna tell them how many people are coming with you?
Oh, I have about sixty in my team.
So, which is amazing. So we're going to be walking the same route as the police department had set up, so it's gonna be a beautiful day in October. We're gonna end up going past the Rutland Cemetery, which is where my boy rests easy, so it's gonna be very emotional and just a day full of love and support, and we've already raised uh over twenty thousand dollars, so we're super excited about that, and just very grateful to be able to have this opportunity here in Rutland, so we wanted to say thank you for the support, and we're excited to make this an annual event. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for all the working, Karen. You've done a wonderful job in helping a lot of people. It's appreciated.
Thank you. It's been amazing. It's been amazing. Thank you for that.
You're an inspiration.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any?
No, thank you. I mean, I think it's, your work is very needed and much appreciated, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and everybody get out there and walk and support the cause.
If you're welcome.
But you know, to your point, um, Chair, Chairman Nichols, we, um, we walked the road this past weekend, and you're right, the issue with the soccer field and the parking, you know, there were little kids out on the road, because they can't walk on the sidewalk.
Yeah. So maybe, um, Ron, we can mention that weekend, that the, that the police put up signs or do something to, it is, it is very difficult, um. They, they blocked the entire road, that sidewalk, so we really need to address that, especially with large events like that, so.
If I may, is your plan to start, um, is it similar to the, um, police department five K, so you'll start at Glenwood and then you'll go down, and then so I was just trying to think, parking wise, if we ask the soccer families to park at Glenwood, that's gonna also add congestion to the start of the race and everything, so it'll definitely take a little bit of.
Well, we're walking on Sunday, so, and we did that intentionally, so hopefully that will help alleviate some of that.
Oh, okay. It definitely should, sure.
Just 'cause I'm not familiar with the stuff. In terms of the solution to the parking issue and stuff, what are you suggesting?
No, 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 I was thinking on Saturdays, if there's nothing going on at Glenwood, the driveway that comes from Glenwood School
Yeah.
out to Glenwood Road, families, soccer families could potentially park along that on the one side, as if you're leaving the school or whatever,
Okay. Okay.
and then walk to the fields, either through the field if it's cut, but I don't know that it's cut right now, or down the, the sidewalk.
I think it's not too, 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 too.
Um, it's not ideal by any means, but it's better than having families park on the street, which is dangerous for getting kids and families in and out of the cars, as well as anybody that's participating in other activities or just walking and even driving, you know, um. So, but I forgot that you, the walk went on Sunday, so thanks for that reminder.
That's work.
So when is soccer play Saturdays?
I think those fields are mostly in use on Saturdays.
That's the big deal.
So the Sunday should be okay then, probably, okay. Just trying to understand the issue.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't do it at all on Sunday?
I don't, I don't think.
No, it's usually kind of for the kids.
I was like, those, those fields are the younger kids, and I don't think the younger kids are usually on Saturdays.
It's a bit, there's not that many kids on the field. There's an awful lot of cars there, so.
All the grandparents.
A lot of fans, yeah. All right, thank you, ladies. Good luck.
Thank you.
Two oh, two oh one, discussion of possible actions. Um, Philly Mitch Resetti's appointment position held. I'm gonna say group and select board rep sewer group. Okay, so recommending to Worcester Regional School Agreement Group, Regional School Budget Working Group, and Select Board Representative for Sewer Discussion Group. So, um, does anybody have any kind of recommendations? Um, so Ron, when we're talking about the Worcester Regional School, School Agreement Group, that's the one, and then the other one was the group that I sat in on with the other TAs and.
Right, so, so let me just distinguish so everybody has a clearance, anyway, what each group does. So, the school system is looking at, every after, I think every five years, they have to review the school and district agreement for any changes. Um, that has been going on for some time. They have a subcommittee, the school committee is looking at that issue. Uh, Mitch was on it, uh, a number of select boards within the region uh did send in all kinds of recommendations. So they had a list of recommendations that uh they gave out that all the towns were involved in. Mitch was very involved in this directly. Um, I'm sure that somebody wants to serve on it. Um, it's kind of, in some ways, a lot of the hard work is already done, because all the proposals were put in. In the school system, I remember them sending out a list of what the different towns proposed. I'd be happy to get it for anybody. I don't expect that there's really gonna be a lot of meetings, but there could be a couple more meetings of that group, so if a select member wants to be involved, to hear what's going on with the regional school district agreement, that would be there, and it would, basically what they would be doing is bringing back to the board of selectmen what's happening, and reporting to the board of selectmen as to what's happening. Um, you know, they're looking for everything from the, you know, the size of the school committee, how big it should be. Uh, they, you know, frankly, I don't think it deals with a lot of the budgetary issues, 'cause the school board's never gonna agree to put in a provision in the agreement that cuts the amount of money that the, the schools would get. Uh, but there were quite a few different kinds of issues that they were looking at, transparency issues and things like that. Uh, so representative, I, those meetings, I think they're occurring at the evening, so there's not like during your workday. Uh, but basically it would provide your name to that group and, and you would sit in through probably a Zoom meeting uh to hear what's going on. Now, the school, the, the other group committee, and these are just committees we put together, so it's not, you know, it's not really a formal appointment process here, or, you know, you don't have to worry about Mitch's resignation, so it's here, yeah, you're just a designation. The other committee is a group of, um, uh, area, the, all the area town managers and town manager and Holden are meeting and there's a representative, one member of each select board on, and we're talking about the school budget and how we deal with that in a better, more organized way than we've done in the past. Uh, I think that's a good thing. Right now, uh, Peter looks from Holden is kind of leading that effort. Uh, we had a recent meeting to talk about that, and I think we have a path that we wanna go to in terms of recommending to select boards what the path is. Um, but there's a lot of, um, I guess I'd call it strategy discussion that still has to move forward, and how we're gonna deal with this over the next number of months until the school committee presents its budget. Um, so I don't know who would wanna serve, and the chair did attend the last meeting, and I think it went well, but I think there's gonna be meetings. Holden will call the meetings as they're needed. Uh, I don't expect a lot, but I do think we need to be smarter in how we deal with the school budget.
And then the, uh, the sewer.
Yeah, the sewer one is another one. It's, um, a lot of that's being structured through DCR, uh, state legislators are involved. Joe Buckley's great, I mean, he really understands, because he used to work, work for Worcester, so he knows the sewer system very well. Uh, he's a tremendous asset in that, and I'm kinda putting on s- more of the pressure side of it, and, and but I think that is going well in our direction, but there's still a lot of issues that have to be addressed and worked out. So, again, I can keep, in that one, I could keep you informed, or if a member's interested in that, but that tends to be late afternoon meetings, so it's, you know, it's a little bit harder in terms of work schedules. Uh, again, there's Zoom meetings, but it's really would be me, Joe, and whoever member wants to serve, and uh, I would say when you can attend, you can attend it, and I don't think it's mandatory, you're there at every meeting, but it'd be nice if you wanna have the information about that and, and add any comments you want, but I think even, even that one, Joe's the technical guy in that, so I think he adds a lot of the weight, and I, again, I'm more getting the state senator, state rep, and DCR to kind of hear the Rutland view, you know, I mean, the, the non-technical financial view, that's kind of what I'm presenting.
So, is, does anybody have any specific interests in participating in any of the groups? Specifically?
It's tough for me to take, I mean.
Yeah, you've, you've got a lot to walk around.
I mean, I know everybody here has a lot going on, so, um.
Yeah, and Carol, would you be interested in any of the school ones, or?
I would be, I would be interested in one of the school ones, or both of them, if they.
You would do, I think you would do well, 'cause you, you've negotiated and worked with school budgets and things before as far as it goes to contracts. So, would you like to take that on, or?
Sure. Was that, just so I'm clear, you're not talking about the school agreement, you're talking about the one, what we're talking about with the, the.
I, I, I think if, we'll have, if, if she doesn't, if Carol doesn't mind, she, she can take on the school agreement one, and then her and I, if one of the other, like, I'll let her, you know, she can go to the meetings, but if she can't make one, you know, 'cause we co-chair anyway, so one or, or one of us could, could participate in the meeting that we, that I did the.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think it'd be great with Carol to the, the agreement one, I think that's important, and we could pick up the information that was given to Mitch, if she could pick that up. And then, if possible, as often as possible, I wouldn't mind if you were, be on the, on the one that's more uh of the, the chair, the select members and administrators to, um, I think we'd, we'd like to have, I'd like to have you at least somehow involved in that one.
Okay. Does that work out?
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, I mean, I don't, I don't mind sitting on that some, of the, some of the sewer ones too, I mean, I, I've negotiated and done a lot with water sewer for me, so.
Yeah, that one I think is, yeah. I'm happy to bring you in and let you know the dates. That one, I, I frankly, either way, we're gonna report back to you, but I, I, I'm not, I don't see as important a selectman in that role than I do the other ones, you know?
Okay. All right, so are we good with that? All right, and then, uh, next on is the appointment of the clerk position on the select board. So we just need to nominate and vote in a new clerk.
I would like to nominate Leah for the clerk position.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Okay.
All right, are you agreeable to that?
Yeah, I can come up and sign my life away.
All right, so.
That's easy.
No, Marty, I'm, I have good intentions.
Yeah, she's, 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 yeah, yeah.
I know, I was hoping to make a drive here, so.
I'm safe. Unlike the finance committee for many years, where Karen had to take notes.
She makes the job easy.
All right, could we get a roll call?
Glock eye.
Benoid eye.
White man eye.
And Nichols eye.
Great.
Thank you all. Appreciate that. All right. So Anita, for the discussion in possible action to, for Rutland voter precinct change, vote to accept the change in precincts, which is what you had reviewed at the last meeting.
Right, there's, um, just a little bit more information in your packet. It might be easy, easier to see, because, um, there's a, a map of the existing precincts. That's the one that's the pink in color, and the pink and the light blue. And then, um, then the new one is the purple and, and dark green, and so basically, um, as I mentioned last time, this is something that happens after every, every ten-year federal census, and the whole goal is to keep the numbers, um, within a certain percentage of the, uh, within all our three precincts, so uh precinct number two, which is basically, um, the, if you divide, take Palmagasa Road and everything to the, I guess it's the east of Palmagasa, except for where precinct three is, that's basically precinct two. So it, it's some of the, uh, like Vista and, and all those developments. So it was really top-heavy, and so the state's requiring us to uh shift some, um, some of our motors between, uh, the two precincts. The other thing that, that we have to look at too is, they, they do look at like minorities and, and, and so that there's balance in all these precincts, and pretty much, and that, that's the demographics that we get from the federal census, but we don't have an issue with that. It's pretty much, um, what the state mapped out. Um, the only, and then I did a new, um, page that has the households that are gonna be affected, and on the first round, we didn't, you, uh, when we were first viewing the maps, we, we basically zeroed in on what part of precinct three, which is um, in the purple on yours, um, it's being extended, the dividing line used to be central. Um, it's being extended, the dividing line used to be Central Tree Road with one precinct on one side of, of Central Tree and the other. So now it's being bumped out to go to Muscat Park Road. And, and, but then, and so those, those households will go from being at the library to back to Nequa. And then, um, in addition, what, what we realized as we kept looking and looking at the maps, there is also a small section up in the northern part of town, um, near the Hubbardston line. It used to be East County Road was the division between precinct one and two. And now they've curved it down into, I don't know if you can see on it, to Davis Street. So, in addition to the residents that I mentioned last time, um, there's eleven houses on Davis Street and four more on East County Road that will move from, um, precinct one to precinct two. So it's a total of two hundred and two households that we will be notifying.
So you'll just send cards out to the individuals that changed those?
And, yep, like that. And it goes into effect, the, the state's pushing us to get, like, your signatures tonight because it goes into effect December thirty-first. And, uh, but we, we don't have a, an election until next May, so.
And will this be available on the website at some point, so?
Yep, we'll be, we'll put up pictures and we will let everybody know. And especially leading up, well, the town meeting, we check everybody and all is one, so.
Yeah.
You know, even if that's on, on the in-between time, but we'll, um, we'll also let people know when we send out the census. And then closer to, to, um, to town election day, so.
I was gonna say, maybe even at the town meeting, we have like a little flyer, postcard that, you know, redistricting is happening. Even if we don't have the specific details, just to let people know that things might be changing or will change or.
We could actually bring some of the big maps and if we can find a, a spot to display them there, it might be a good time to.
So I think I had asked before, it's not usually an issue. I mean, it's kind of a watch as far as people are totally married to where they're voting and not. And we're close enough that the going between the library and Nequa is generally not an issue.
It's not, right.
So, I just wanna make sure that, you know, as least disruptive as possible for.
And, um, and basically, but we don't have any choice.
Right.
But, uh, I mean, that, you know, and by us doing, and with having the Secretary of State's office drive it, they provide all the mapping and, and do all the, uh, the, you know, um, we're working right now and we need to get Joe involved. The last little step is, is just the legal boundary definition. And, uh, and once we have that and have your signatures on the board, then we'll be able to submit all the paperwork back. And I think, um, I think in your packet is, is, uh, basically what you would need to, um, make a motion to accept. And then there's room for signature. I have a problem if you don't.
I think this has to be a last in select board, Jamie. This is just the last in select board.
Let's see that. How was it sent to Anita? Was it sent as an email or?
Um, I think there's paper copies in there too that, and I, and I.
You've got the list of the street changes and the two maps.
Uh, I've got a motion.
I thought Beth had a coffee, but it's, I'm pretty.
So, if the board's amenable, I can, um.
Sure.
Oh, no, wait, no, this is, oh, yeah.
Just basically saying we accepted.
I can.
And so she does have a.
Yeah.
So I can make a motion that we vote to accept as presented by the town clerk, the twenty-twenty re-presecing plan for the town of Rutland.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call?
Mark I.
Benoit I.
Waitman I.
And Nichols I.
And then if you don't mind signing, and then we'll send it off.
Is this the official one, is it?
Yep. They just came from Anita.
Well, you could have gone both ways.
This is, this is the one that was in the packet.
I knew that one. You can skip some of that, boys.
Yeah, it's all right.
I think this is the answer.
If I may, I think, I know we have a lot of other people here. Is Anita, are you here also for the select board GOS discussion? Or was that just informational?
That was informational, but I'll probably stick around a while, so.
Okay, I was gonna say, no, we should take that out of order, but I know there's a lot of other people here for other agenda.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is acceptance of the CM Geeks renewal contract, vote to approve contract.
Comment, Mr. Chairman? Anything to comment?
Yeah.
I'm gonna wait for the motion to be available. So this is a, just a, a new three-year contract. Essentially, it's the same contract in terms of language that we had in place. This is a three-party contract between us, Dispatch, and the Town of Bear. Um, basically it just continues the services. I will say this, in the, in the year I've been here, or almost a year I've been here, I'm very pleased with the work that CM Geek does there. Extremely good. Whenever you call, you immediately get somebody to handle whatever your problem is. Also, I find at least that the work that they've given has been, been very good. Uh, I know there was one issue that we didn't get some information in terms of the capital project that we should've got earlier. Uh, that is clear that they, they did make a mistake in that issue, but overall their service has been great. But more importantly, the, the price, the contract terms in terms of dollars, extremely low. I don't think we'd ever find anybody else to do this kind of work, uh, for the prices that they're offering. The price is within the town budget system, I think a more than reasonable price. Uh, everybody there seems to be extremely pleased with them. Dispatch is very pleased with them. So overall, I, I think it's a good contract and it makes a lot of sense.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve the contract with CM Geeks as written.
An approval of the, the town administrator to sign the contract?
Send approval for the town administrator to sign.
Do we have a second?
Wait a second.
Any comments or questions?
I mean, if, like, I, I know that price-wise, this is great and the service level compared to pre, you know, previous has been very good. Um, I just hope that the little snafu with the.
Capital.
Capital equipment and everything is, you know, a wake-up call for everyone. I mean, us as well as, you know, I don't wanna finger-point at any individual's entity, but just as, that we can go forward and know that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's.
No, I, I completely agree. I, I thought at the time when it happened and, and the chairman of the finance committee made it clear to me her feelings about it too. Uh, I expressed that to them as well and the timing of it. It's really not gonna be an issue for the next three years because of the managed services contract anyway. But going forward after three years, it's, that's gonna be another issue that we have to look at.
Well, and just, I mean, it might not be an issue for those, those items, but any potential items that might be bubbling up or, you know, just in conversation or whatever, so just that there's a little bit more communication.
No, I, I completely agree. Capital items too, we have to have them. Uh, obviously, they have to be put into our budget for the year that we're dealing with. In this case, had it gone forward in the old way, we would've had a problem. But, but, thank God it got kind of resolved for this year, but it could've been a, a significant problem in terms of how we would've funded it. So, probably what we would've had to do is deal with it free cash in this fall town meeting, but that, we should've, they should've planned it better. I agree.
And then, seven comments or concerns? All right, and then a roll call?
Mark I.
Benoit I.
Waitman I.
And Nichols I. Uh, next, discussion and possible action for three-hundred anniversary committee. Moved September twenty-fourth, Friday concert scheduled to October eighth, rain date of October ninth. Vote to approve the new Milk Room ODLL date change.
So moved.
For a second?
So.
Oh, why?
A second?
Do we have any, uh, comments or concern?
I just wanted to thank the three-hundredth for putting the concerts on. I think it's been very well received and it seems like from the community, Rutland community, but also the broader, um, community also. So, thank you guys. I know it, it's a lot of work, but it's really appreciated, so.
Thank you. Good job. All right, roll call?
Mark I.
Benoit I.
Waitman I.
Nichols I. Just some points you guys have.
Mr. Chair is it? With the feet wave or also?
Oh, do we get the, you want, can you, I'm ready.
Word.
I think Skip moved it.
Yeah, I'm ready to wave the feet.
And I'll, I think Carol did the second one.
I'll second.
So, are we all in favor?
All right, Mark I.
Benoit I.
Waitman I.
And Nichols I.
Thank you.
There you go. Good call. Hopeless for that one.
I wanna get that bill.
Yeah, we went to the chair, it'd be fine.
Um, discussion regarding the use of select board and board of selectmen. You know, you sent us some information, Anita. I know, Ron, you've reviewed it.
Yeah, you know, there's just, I think, kind of simple issues. I think for a practical matter, you know, on a local level, calling every member, so the board of selectmen is great. It takes away that gender issue. Uh, I know that it makes me sometimes uncomfortable when I refer as board of selectmen, knowing that there's, uh, two women on the board. So I think from a, a local perspective, using the select board is perfectly appropriate. The state has not caught up to that issue yet on a statewide basis. The official name under general statutes of, for the state of Massachusetts still have to be described to the board of selectmen. And all signatures of official documents have to be by the board of selectmen. But I think in all other cases, and appropriately with the bylaw in place, I think it's perfectly acceptable to, to refer to ourselves, or yourselves, as a select board.
Jeff, did you have a comment or a question?
Uh, Jeff Stillings, Lord Lane, we, we voted on this. It would've been June of twenty-eighteen. Uh, check the minutes, we already, we already voted on it.
That's, it's in the bylaw, Jeff.
I think it was just to make sure that we were clear on when we can and can't use it 'cause I think there was some confusion on letters and things.
Yeah, so if I'm, I had asked to have it on because I remember there was a town meeting vote years ago that involved some change, and then we as a select board voted, um, more recently. And I wasn't sure what the, what the next steps were, if there were next steps or whatever, and so I just asked for that clarification.
Yep, through the chair. Um, the, the vote that was at town meeting was, um, well, Peter can probably explain it better than I can. But, uh, it was when we were working on the bylaws and part of, one of the, um, changes there was for the bylaws, we chose to refer, uh, to your board of selectmen all the way through because it was a mismatch back and forth. So that was what the vote was at town meeting. Some towns have gone ahead and petitioned the state legislature to legally change their name uh, to select board rather than board of selectmen, but that's a, a lengthier process. You have to, uh, put it on a warrant to have the town meeting vote to allow your board to petition the legislature and, and then do that. So, um, I think what, I thought that Jeff was right, I just wasn't sure when it had happened. I think that's what your board did at the time was just to say, just to go ahead and just refer to you as select board, correct?
I, I was only referring to the select, board of selectmen meeting around June of twenty-eighteen that we voted.
Oh, okay.
Not, not speaking to the town meeting.
Peter?
Peter Crain Nate's way, um, the next revision to the select board bylaw adds two magic words and otherwise, which as I understand it, gives legal weight to calling yourselves in all contexts, select board.
Okay. All right, let me take care of that. So, um, is everybody comfortable? All set?
Yeah, thanks for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Right, I'm. I was just gonna mention, this website, that's gonna say board of selectmen, so maybe we should use it on the town website too. On the, um, boards and commissioners page.
Yeah, some of it has, has been changed, but that's one change that, um, we'll need to go to our website provider, but I'll, I'll, I'll look into that.
We'll leave that to our subcommittee web, new room, right? All right, um, now, uh, regarding the Verizon agreement for banners on polls.
Ms. Chairman, um, this has been an interesting discussion. I signed the, the information, um, requesting it, and they sent me this contract back. And I gotta admit, the first time I did a quick review of it, a little bit flabbergasted on what I thought was overly complicated for essentially just allowing us to put banners on the polls. Have now read it three additional times, uh, I'm not nearly as concerned about the contract language. Uh, the reason I put it before the board is 'cause I'm not, I have not paid an attorney to review this. Although I must admit, I've read a lot of the contracts and I'm feeling much, much more comfortable with this. I had a call into Carol Richards in Paxton and I haven't seen it, got me back to, back to me yet on this issue. But I'm, I'm comfortable at least from, again, I qualify, I'm not an attorney. But having reviewed this a number of times, I don't feel it's, it's, has any real negative to the town. I've talked to the chairman of the three-hundredth anniversary committee about this. Um, and she says to me, the, you know, there's a question about installing of banners on the polls. She believes that the people who do this are a professional company that will do it, uh, and we won't be exposed to any liability. The only question about this, at least in my mind, I have to still deal with. We sent a letter to MMA about the insurance provision on this because Verizon did require that, uh, we put them as a named insured in our insurance policy for this purpose, to protect them. Uh, whenever you do that, there is a charge. And we, uh, asked MMA for that. It's currently in underwriting as of today, so we don't have an answer back to that. But I suspect that there will be, I don't know, anywhere from a three-hundred to a seven-hundred dollar charge to, uh, put this, uh, put them as, uh, an insured, just like we do on the liquor permits we have them. Same thing, but I just don't know the number. I'm guessing frankly. Um, I was asked, you know, what other towns do, and that's one of the questions I had out for, um, for Paxton. I, I would suggest that the towns that do this, because of the nature of the benefit of this sort of community, that they pay it on their own insurance fees or whatever it might be. I will say that our insurance is just paying for what we have in them, so more difficult for us to do this. Uh, we'd have to try to find some other account to fund whatever the cost of this insurance provision is, if you wanna go forward with it. Or, either that or it would be, have to be some privately raised money to, to do this. But that is the one thing that, we don't have a clear answer for how to overcome yet, that insurance cost.
So, yeah, so we, we don't know the cost at this point, do you?
No, they haven't given us back it. And it might have had it for over a week and they haven't, we're just giving it back to us. I know that, um, Beth called again today and was told it was in underwriting.
I mean, I, I know a lot of towns do it, and like I said, I know, as it is, we already have all the flags on the, on the polls.
Mm-hmm.
And I know you were calling Paxton 'cause I know that, that when the seniors, that for graduation, they had them on the polls, so.
Yep.
I mean, I can't imagine, they, they paid a lot of money to have that done. Does anybody have any questions or concerns at this time, or we just wanna just wait and see whether it's, if it ends up being some crazy amount of money? I guess.
I suspect it's gonna be between, if you ask me, I guess I'm expecting it's between three and seven hundred bucks. I don't think it's gonna be some crazy number. Problem is I don't have three or seven hundred bucks on insurance line. So, I mean, I could look at other lines and talk to the finance committee about a potential transfer from something to something. I don't know if they'd be interested, but she doesn't exactly give me good vibes at the moment, but so.
This contract for how long?
Um, this contract, I think it's, I, I don't think it's even dated. I think it just allows us to put up the signs and.
I mean, it's forever forever or just?
No, they didn't, I didn't see, they didn't see any dates.
By Marcella, did you have, they just want to make sure.
Did you see a date?
Yeah, so, um, Hubbardston went through this for their two-hundred-fiftieth several years ago, and they jumped through the hoops for it. Um, unfortunately, the town administrator, um, as Mr. San Angelo knows, is away. Uh, he's on active duty right now. Uh, whether he was the person who assisted the celebrations coordinator in achieving that, I'm not actually sure. It might've been the previous town administrator. Either way, um, and we sort of knew this walking in, you brought up the flags, that was why I raised my hand. We alerted the local legion that we might be opening up Pandora's Box with this. Verizon got back to us immediately to say, by the way, your flags are not, and have never been approved to be put up.
Yeah.
Um, and when we told the legion that we would jump through the hoops for them to ensure that now everything would be able to be done and done officially, um, I, I can't honestly say how many towns Verizon would go to and sort of crack the whip and say, you didn't do your paperwork, it's time to back this up. Whether our turn was going to come at some point relative to our flags that we've put up for many, many years, um, religiously, right, for three events all, you know, every single year, I'm not sure. I'm happy that we're getting this done the right way. Um, I, I cannot, I can't say that the three-hundredth committee has had a discussion about the cost involved very specifically to, uh, add insurance to. the cost involved very specifically to, uh, add insurance to, uh, as a binder. Um, but certainly, our goal here is not as an enormous money maker, and probably we could absorb, um, a certain amount of the costs involved if it ends up being, you know, within that sort of three to seven hundred dollar range.
As it, I'm looking through this, there is no term, Skip, I'm surprised, but it doesn't say anything about a term. It's just, it's a license to allow you to put it on the polls, it doesn't say. It does say that they can take them down for a variety of different reasons, or, you know, if, they're not gonna maintain the polls just 'cause the flag's on it, but they don't have any term. So I think it's until they, you know, until you wanna take them down, right, or they have an objection to it for some reason.
No, Harbiston indicated that it was an open-ended, you do it once, you're done, you're good moving forward.
But you must add that to the insurance and then it's permanently across to the.
Yeah, once you put it in, it becomes part of your annual insurance policy. Like I said, if.
You can claim whatever we want on the polls after that, right?
Yeah.
Well, truthfully, if I had extra money insurance, this would be a no-brainer for me. I would just say, "Fine." The problem is, is that our insurance rates are right at where they are. We found that out, um, when we were talking about, um, the concerts. We were talking about that, that is an issue as well, so. That, that was part of the reason why we had to have them provide their own insurance to the breweries and stuff. But I, I don't have money in that line, so again, it would have to be a discussion with the finance committee to move it from some other line to that line.
Can we wait till the end of the year and do the transfer?
That'd be the end of the year. So I'd over, probably end up on, over expend by four hundred bucks or whatever and come for the transfer.
Carol?
Um, Sheila, how many are you planning on selling?
We had a lot of interest. Um, so the plan right now is to submit to Verizon a full list of all the polls running all the way from the intersection of Glenwood Road all the way down to Pleasantale. Also, a portion of Maple Avenue down to probably the entrance to the Heights. We've had certain, um, individuals ask for certain locations, depending on where they live, depending on where their business is, depending on whether or not they want to be on the parade route. Um, and so we also know, and Verizon indicated this in their first email to us, some of our polls are difficult. They're up on high rises as you're driving up to town. Any of those polls that would require additional work by Verizon, as the, uh, surveying, something like that, they suggested to us that we simply just dispose of those and say, "No, we're moving on to the next one." So, I, I envision several dozen of these banners, um, going up. I think we'll see a pretty good response, and we'll most likely see banners going all the way down the center of town and, and down those two roads.
So I guess the, the, I'll, I'll throw a potential out there, the board can do as it chooses, right? You can vote to agree to have me sign the contract, subject to spending no more than five hundred dollars on insurance or whatever. But that, and then just know that I'm gonna go over on the line item and I'm letting everybody know that now, and that we're gonna have to deal with it at the end of the, the end of the year.
Does some, does there's some.
Well, uh, my, my point of asking was, if, if you're talking seven, several dozen, are you talking, how many, how much? I'm sorry, I have a different, I have a different de- definition of several than many.
I think we're probably somewhere between sixty to eighty-four banners when we're all of a sudden done.
Sixty, eighty-four banners.
I, I think I'm probably on the high end with the eighty-four. Um, there's more polls than you'd think.
Is my math right that if you were to give the town ten dollars for every, that would cover the cost of the insurance?
But, you weren't really making money on the banners, last time, right?
Well, yeah, no.
Were, were you? Oh, you were?
The, the banners are, as everybody knows, the, the, you know, the ads are up everywhere. The banners are three hundred dollars per banner.
Okay.
Um, our costs are not finalized yet, but at this point, it looks like something under a hundred fifty dollars per banner for the actual construction of it, plus we have the costs of the hardware, which we actually don't have that total cost yet. That's gonna be our sort of area. I think we have some room there. Was it meant to be a little bit of a fundraiser? Sure. Um, do we need it to be an enormous fifty to eighty percent fundraiser? No. So, yeah, we can, I think, again, this hasn't been brought to the committee as something, well, that, you know, we're gonna have a bill from the town, but I certainly, we can add it to an agenda.
I, if I, along the same lines, I also wonder if the potential, you know, the three hundredth committees jump through the hoops to do all this, and then the potential for other town organizations to have banners of some sort, if maybe, I don't, and I don't wanna pigeonhole like a PTL or something, you know what I mean? But to Paxton's point, as far as putting like their graduates up or something along those lines, like, if there was
Still on the hardware.
the opportunity for other town entities to participate in using those, that situation, then maybe everybody, you know, can, um, kick in some, I don't know, I don't wanna.
I mean, I guess I'm just thinking about the, for the first year, the, if, if, the insurance money is.
It's a hindrance.
It's a hindrance.
We could work with you.
We could even do like a sha- a shared cost, like, you know, match or something.
Yeah. Well, they're doing all the work, and the flags have been going up for years.
Right. Right.
So I think at this point, you're gonna be shocked to hear this, I think, town's gotta eat it, town's gotta eat it.
I know, then, I, I can't believe where you're going.
Town's gotta eat it, because the fact is, they're doing all the work, they're saving us from having any potential problem.
Yeah.
So, Sheila and Jeff doing all that work, they, they should, they should be able to keep the money that they got.
So maybe, I mean, like we said, we could set an amount, and then if it goes above that, then, you know.
Just have a big sale.
We'll find out some way to reduce it.
Does somebody wanna make a motion to authorize one to go within the.
Yeah, what's the dollar, is the, or I'm happy to make the motion, I just wanna, you know, is seven hundred okay? If he's using.
Is that eight hundred dollars? Why not?
What, sorry?
Eight hundred.
Where do these people come from?
Yeah, it's like two conservatives, they're like, hey, airbox, that's good.
Well, make the motions, Skip.
Make it.
I'll make a motion that Ron sign the contract, but not to exceed eight hundred dollars.
For insurance.
For insurance purposes.
White man's eye.
All right, real call.
Black eye.
Good night, I.
White man eye.
My nickel's eye.
I feel comfortable.
That's a historic moment, I'm gonna write that down.
I know, I mean, unexpected. You shouldn't be able to get it for four feet. I'm thinking it should be that, I'm thinking, that's why I gave that range, but.
All right, uh, next up is donation of a bandstand to the town.
If, if, Mr. Chairman, I'd like the, uh, chair of the three hundredth anniversary committee who brought this forward, that I don't know anything about it, other than it sounds nice.
Yeah, so it, it, it has been a little bit on the down low, and it, it sort of still is this evening. However, this is our first stop. Uh, we were approached very generously, uh, by a local contractor to donate a bandstand, to construct it, to pay for the materials, to do everything, soup to nuts. Um, going along with that, we reached out to a community that we knew was already in the midst of doing this project, and that was the Town of Sandwich. The Town of Sandwich director of, uh, planning and development was very nice, actually knows this area and has worked in this area before, and was nice enough to provide us with a PDF version of the plans, which I think were attached, um, and that you were able to look at. The, the gazebo bandstand that you're looking at is an octagon, it's twenty-eight square feet in diameter, and as you can see, it is fully ADA compliant. I can tell you right now, uh, two things. The contractor suggested that for our purposes, uh, maybe it would be better to build it up on concrete pylons a little bit. Um, to go along with that discussion, because this is, uh, a big decision that needs to be made, uh, one of our bands that came, uh, had a member that is in a wheelchair. Uh, he has agreed to be a consultant on this project and to take a look based on what the select board would like to do as to whether or not this bandstand should be ground level with that small slope that you're seeing, or raised up a little bit, still accessible to a point, but not the level of ADA, full compliance that you're looking at, um, in the sandwich plans. The sandwich plans were designed by, uh, an architectural firm down in Yarmouth Port. However, they were also engineered, uh, by a company in Concord to withstand the weather that the sandwich area, um, sees, which I can honestly say, so does the top of the Town of Rutland, uh, so we were very excited to see that. The contractor has seen these plans, um, believes that they are very buildable. In fact, there is nothing to see right now in Sandwich, and that's because the, uh, local school down there, they're actually building it as a project, they're building it in sections, and they're gonna be bringing it down to the location. Um, it's behind where it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be ready this season, where we could have gone to, you know, take a little road trip to go to see it. Covid set them back, uh, also the teacher that's running the program, uh, had a bit of an accident, uh, and is now back, and, and now has the current students who are building it. It's PVC wrapped, um, you'll note, and I, and I'm not a plan reader myself, but the plans are really quite complete. You are the deciding voice for Townlands. Um, I will say, this has already come up as well, I'm sure it needs to come up again, as we all know, and this has been a discussion in the past. Uh, there is a portion of the common that actually is owned by the state, I think it's actually where both of our monuments are. Uh, the location of this, um, if we were to place it in the location that the bands have consistently been setting up over the past, not just this summer, but for Fourth of July, which would basically be in the eyesight of just to the right as you're looking at Community Hall, and just to the left as you're looking at the annex, so right in between. Um, and that should be safe relative to that state-land boundary, I'm sure we would need to survey it. Uh, we also asked the contractor, because we had an issue one week, uh, with the electrical panel that's out there. Um, we overloaded it, we had a con, you know, too many things going on all at once, uh, and said, you know, as part of this project, somebody's probably gonna ask for an upgraded electrical panel, and they agreed that that would be part of the project, and sort of just said, "Well, just tell us where to put it." Um, 'cause if you're ever gonna, you know, do something like that, this is the time to do it. So, obviously, many discussions to be had, the goal would be to get this built in time for next Memorial Day. Um, with an extension of June eighteenth as our sort of drop dead for the actual Tricentennial Day.
So, I, I mean, I, I would like Cindy to be involved in looking at this ability as our ADA coordinator as well, obviously, so she has put any input on that, so.
If, sorry, I was gonna say, if I may, I know that kind of this bandstand idea was a huge thing that had come out in our Town Center Study, um, work group also, and so there's definitely one and a need for it, and I think there was conversation in our, in our study group as to the best location. I think the fourth, the three hundredth committee as well as Fourth of July historically has had most success with it being there on the common, and the band seems like having that publicity of like people coming on Main Street and willingness to stop and, and everything versus, I think there, we had at one point mentioned possibly back here behind the library or something, which has a gorgeous view, but it's a little bit more secluded, and you're less likely to get the passerby's and everything. So, um, I mean, I think the timing of it is phenomenal as far as the activities that we have going forward, as well as it's a strong one from the community coming out of our Town Center study work also, so.
Right, it, it obviously would add to the charm of the town, especially around the holidays and the Fourth of July and all that stuff, being able to decorate it. I mean, it'd be a nice showpiece for.
Right.
for people to see going through the center of town, so.
Yep.
And I think that that does catch people's attention, so that would draw more people to participate. So, are we looking for a motion?
Well, just a comment first. Um, I assume that we're talking about kind of where the truck was, the, this platform is just. There's no issue with off to the ten feet, 'cause you're talking that, uh, uh, near the road, we're way back from that.
Yeah.
We are talking, though, we gotta be careful, because I don't, the town owns part of that common, but the churches may own part of it too, so we're talking more to the left.
No.
No, no, you're not, you're not near the church.
You're staying over to the Town Hall, you're not going over at all, okay. So I have no problem, I think it's a great idea, and if it's a gift, then the simple motion is that the town, the board of selectmen votes to accept a gift of a bandstand, gazebo slash gazebo. I don't think, right now, you, can you announce the name of the company, or do you wanna wait for?
Do they, do they want to be announced, or do they wanna be announced?
Yeah, I mean, I think they deserve recognition if they want it.
They certainly do deserve recognition, they have asked to wait a little bit.
Okay, so just, just accept the gift, and you can later on, when we know and they wanna be announced. But I, I think it would be right to make sure that we recognize this is a great donation. You're talking, in my opinion, from what I'm seeing, over twenty-plus grand in terms of the cost of the set. So you're, you're talking a very serious donation, depending, again, they do all the work, we're talking about the, the actual building, but it's, you know.
We're, we're very excited for the town. I mean, this is exactly what a tricentennial celebration is about, this is once in a lifetime for all of us. Um, this is a big deal, we certainly weren't around for the two hundredth, we won't be around for the four hundredth. And this is exactly what we're talking about with public-private partnerships, um, this is an amazing gift. It's a, it's a wonderful, amazing gift, and if everyone is happy with the additional sort of gift that we received from the Town of Sandwich and with the design, which I, I think can be a winner, but everybody should look at it and, and let us know what you want our next steps to be, um, yeah, we're in great shape.
I was gonna say thank you to Sandwich also for, for sharing this, and also just run it by, um, Joe and Seth, because I know there was some conversation when we were talking about a gazebo at, um, for the seniors or whatever, with snow load and everything. Beans, it sounds like, are good to go because they're designed for Massachusetts, but just, you know, obviously, and the contractor, I'm sure, also has that insight as well.
Obviously, we'll, we'll work with them, you know, myself and Joe, to make sure it's appropriate and everything's okay, so. I'm not, truthfully, I'm not the least bit concerned about it, and quite frankly, if, if we needed any additional touch-up, there was, I was gonna ask a question about electricity, she answered, I was happy, but I was thinking, as she was talking, Bay Path would be great to come in and do that too. Well, it doesn't seem to sound like we need Bay Path for that, so it sounds like they're doing soup to nuts, the whole project, so that, that's phenomenal, um, so.
So, Brad, I'm, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, twenty-eight feet in octagon, I think we should probably stake it out, um, so everyone can see what it looks like.
Okay. Jeff, I don't know how long the trailer is. Do you think that?
Uh, it'll be the twenty-three.
Feet, so, so if that's twenty-three feet long, but this is, uh, yeah, twenty-eight feet this way.
It won't be, it won't be as long.
How big is Princeton?
Yeah, it won't be as long, but it's gonna be rounded, it's gonna be, but it won't be as long as the trailer.
But I guess I'm wondering, if it's a bandstand of bands, like, would, would they be?
Would they fit?
Would they fit?
Yeah, exactly.
Would make them fit, squeeze them right in.
'Cause they, they, they. They can't.
So.
They won't be able to go like this, and I don't know if they like to go like that, because you were on a platform that, that, that kind of dictated that, or if they'd like.
I'm gonna smell the bag. Right, go on, push it.
So, um, we can actually ask, we had a wonderful, uh, offer, this is off-topic slightly, uh, from New England Swing Orchestra. Uh, they got grant money from the cultural council to do a performance in twenty twenty-one or twenty-two, we're trying to see if we can fit it in. Um, they are a ten-piece orchestra, and we've had some big bands with a lot of equipment, so I think that's great. I think we'll reach out to everybody that we've had, um, as well as New England Swing, and see if, once we stake it, they can maybe drive by, come and see if it's something that will work for them. Thank you.
Both Sturbridge and Southbridge have that gazebo kind of bandstand, they have all kinds of concerts and everything else on them, so.
But is it that, it, what's the size?
Yeah, we'll have to look, 'cause I think it's just as big, so I don't think it's, I don't think it's any smaller than what they do, and they do all kinds of stuff on them, so. And it, it works out beautiful, I think. It's also good for, you know, different groups that wanna come in and do all kinds of things. I mean, you have knitting clubs and those things, you have all kinds of events, so it's not just the concerts, it's, it's all kinds of things, it's gonna use itself.
Okay.
So I'm confused, where we wanna put this?
So, right where the concerts.
In front of the Town Hall?
Right where the concerts have been, so not immediately in front of Town Hall, jogged over, so if you're looking at Town Hall, it will not be obstructive.
Slightly to the right of the front of Town Hall, from.
With everything else we got going on up there, we're gonna stick this up there too? No, I can't see it.
What do you mean, as far as everything else we have?
You've got the monument, you've got the benches, you've got all that stuff up there, right there in front of the building.
So, just to give you some perspective, Skip, the monuments are way to the front of the property, right? The benches are in the middle of the property, and this would be to the back of the property, just so you know the perspective of it.
Yep, so, you can't.
So, but it, you know, it's another thing, huh?
I mean, I think it adds a lot of benefits for even the, um, like Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies and stuff. It provides, you know, enclosed space for folks that want to participate but might need to sit. It looks like there's be- bench seating around the outside, um, it's a little bit enclosed if the weather is not ideal for, you know, anybody playing taps or whatever.
I mean, we've, we've basically been doing this, just like setting up platforms and historically taking that space up. I mean, I guess it will be a permanent fixture there, but we can use that space.
Anybody wants to walk around the common, they gotta walk around the gazebo. I mean, let's be real, that's a common, it's not, I don't know, I just don't.
But they could go up, they could go and they could sit on the gazebo, so.
Well, I just, I think it's the wrong place, all right?
Show me one common with that one.
Sheila, you have comments?
Yeah, I mean, if I may, I don't entirely disagree. We don't have a very large common the way Barry does. Um, and our gazebo, as lovely as it will be, will not necessarily support a, a performance in the round the way we see in some other towns, which of course is why I think you were talking about some of these other locations, which would have offered more space. The issue we have, and we really have had bands tell us this, that they love that feeling of being right up in the center of everything, and it made it cozy. We did not need a huge crowd to have it feel like there was a crowd, and to have it feel like a sense of community. Um, I, I agree though, I, we, we need to stake it out, we need to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Uh, if there are issues, I think that will do it. We certainly didn't wanna do that before we talked to you, so.
Yeah, but I mean, having it in the center like that, it, it just adds the excitement and people driving by, and it's the whole charm of the town.
It's like the, the.
It's, it's this, it's a celebration that, that it creates. If you stick it in the back somewhere, it'll be nice and convenient for concerts and stuff, but it's not gonna add to the downtown, the charm of the downtown. Do you have a comment?
You, you know the town does own a piece of property right across the street. Is there any way of that maybe being enlarged and there is bought, and then the people can park and they quog with the concert?
I guess my fear would be people going, crossing that much more. I mean, we have plenty of crossing as it is with these events, but to have everybody constantly going across that road, as it is, that, that road's a nightmare. Um, I mean, that would be my main concern, I don't know what other.
Crossing for, if the.
Constantly going on the other side of the road from the common to go to the, the, the concerts and stuff like that, just for that purpose.
Well, behind that, if the town would buy out the land.
Yeah.
So, nobody really knows where the boundary line is, right in front of this building from the road out to.
So, nobody really knows where the boundary line is right in front of this building from the road out to
Well, we just had a check, didn't we, Ron?
No, we're not surveying it. It hasn't been surveyed, Joe, Joe is asking, Joe is asking, actually, I think it was Dick.
Because Dick made us.
Dick made it, Joe is, yeah. Joe is working with the state to put up something as a marker to say where that goes in, but then, but that, we're nowhere's near that, 'cause that's at the ten feet, about the ten feet area in from the road and then we're talking way back from that. But I don't think that the, the road issue or the state property is an issue at all. But I think, you know, there's a good point, it's a big and a small piece of property, yeah.
That's all I say.
Yeah, that's why I think, you know, I've said in the past, I think that the library, behind the library land would be better, but
I, I think it would be nice to, to just consider and take a look right out here, not swushed up at the common, but right here in the bigger section, more people can sit.
Well, well, we don't own a lot of it, so it's, that's a problem.
But it, it'd be interesting to know what we could.
So, that was the discussion I've had in the past and I thought to Joe about it, I just don't wanna look at this. Land behind the library, there's a piece of land that is being used by DPW.
We ain't talking about there, we're talking off-front. I would out back, 'cause I can, I agree with Sheila. We're gonna put the gazebo out back, nobody's gonna see it, nobody's gonna know where it's at unless you put a bunch of signs up saying, "Gazebo this way," you know? And follow the red, the yellow dog.
But we're talking about a whole park, not just a variable, but, but I am sure.
I mean, it's
It, it did generate a lot of discussion.
The issue is it could be moved if it had to be in the future. It could be moved to another location, that's okay.
I mean, it's obviously a, a tremendous gift and an asset that we obviously would not wanna not consider, in my opinion.
Right. Right. And so, I mean, I would like to, I would be comfortable saying, get it staked out, so see what the size is, the imprint, and then, um, get some feedback from, you know, like I said, police, fire, DPW, um, and the folks working in the buildings. And even just maybe some feedback from, from the public. I think change is hard and I think it's, so it's going to be hard to see it no matter where it goes. I, I know we have electricity right there. I don't know how close, I mean, obviously there's electricity out here 'cause we light the Christmas tree and everything, the holiday tree, but I don't know where the boundary is for the churches versus town and everything.
Well, they, I, we only own like in front of this library, my understanding. Like, the churches own in front of the, their own space, so, so we don't own that space.
Right, right. Right.
So, I mean, we could, they, they're not dictating where they want it to go, right? They're just giving it as a gift. So, I think, I think you're right, we should stake it out, look at it, how big it is, whether it works for bands, whether it looks like it's gonna take up too much of the common. If there's too many issues, we can always reconsider this spot out here. I mean, I think it, I think, I mean, that just seems to be the hub of where everything happens, you know, in that spot, so I think it's worth, worth looking at. Looking at that space to see if it works.
And I think, right, and I think even just thinking like for, um, camp and stuff, you know, rec camp or, or any swimming or anything, it provides an, an additional outdoor space, um, for, that's closer than c- crossing Palma Gasset,
Right.
um, that, you know, is right there through the, the park and everything, um, so.
It's, it's amazing the amount of people we fit over there on the Fourth of July, so, I mean, not that that's the, the best, but so, I, I mean, does everybody agree we'll look at, you know, staking out, see if that works and all those, you know, concerns are, are addressed? And if not, we can see if it works over here. But I think at this point we should, um, consider, I, I think we should accept it unless somebody has objection. I mean, that's something that, you know, like you say, is a great gift that I don't think I'd wanna miss, let go by, so.
Yeah, and I mean, I think the benefit that it brings to town is phenomenal, so I think we would be silly to not accept it and do yet.
So, does somebody wanna make a motion to?
So, I'll make a motion that we accept the donation of the ban, bandstand to the town, um, and, you know, pending all the loopholes and
Lo- location to be determined.
Location to be determined with some staking out and obviously running it by, you know, everyone, all the stakeholders and stuff, the, in town.
Second.
Any other discussion? We'll call?
Black eye.
Benoid eye?
White men eye.
And nickel's eye. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, guys. I mean, your committee has been doing so much, so I think
Let the party continue.
No, but it's exciting and it's exciting to see that all the pieces that have come together, you know, like I said, even from Town Center Study to, to this, to it's, there's a strong want for it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
So, next up is Scenic Road Public Hearing. So, you wanna talk about this one? This came up from our last meeting.
Yeah, you know, this is one that, I'm kinda a little surprised we are where we are. So, back before the last Fall of Town meeting, uh, there was a proposal to put a number of roads as part of scenic bylaws on the Fall of Town meeting. I suggested that before they did that, that they should have a public hearing to hear how the people are gonna be impacted by this, sorry. Because when you make a road a scenic road, then walls that are close to scenic road before you can do anything with them, you have to get approval from the Planning Commission. Same is true if you wanna do any work with trees, so, so limit some of the things you can do on your own property if these roads are designated. And, uh, I suggested Historical Commission meet with the Planning Commission and, and decide the path forward on this. And they did meet, to their credit, they met and they talked about this. And in fact, the Planning Commission, as a result of that meeting, endorsed putting those roads onto the thing. But still was le- left out, um, was the public hearing kind of component to it. I really believe, I believe that and I still believe now that the people who live on those roads should be able to at least comment about this before it gets on Town Meeting. I know there was a discussion at the Planning Commission, uh, and the Planning Commission was suggesting that the Historical Commission should take a lead on a public hearing. I think there's actually been a date of a meeting scheduled. Uh, I'm not sure if it's a public hearing. Public hearing generally, the difference between a public hearing and a regular meeting is you have to post notice in the newspaper. Uh, you know, you've got your way to put it on the town website and on the Facebook pages. In some public hearings, the contractors who might be required to do that public hearing pay for notifying of butters, but in this case, it's not contractor. So, we don't think we have to go to the extreme of, of notifying butters, but I think my, the message I got clearly from the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, um, was that they wanted to have a public hearing, they wanted people to have wrote. As a result, you know, we had the one citizen here who came and spoke about the issue. Uh, and I think it was added to this agenda, uh, because I suggested that perhaps the Board of Selectmen would not even wanna add this to the warrant if that public hearing didn't occur.
Right.
Like, could you follow strongly? So, I think you asked me to put on the Jennifer just there.
I mean, wh- when we, we reviewed it and we were supportive of it, we, we were under the standing, understanding that there was more of a public hearing and then, um, you know, come to find out, it was just a, a pub, you know, a regular, um, me, open meeting, which didn't really allow for as much, um, people to, to discuss and, and look at it. And, and that resident had a concern regarding traffic and other issues that she thought might impact her personally and she, and she wasn't, you know, aware of or wanted to make us, uh, make sure that we, we let everybody know that was on those, those roads of what was going on. So, we felt that having a public hearing to allow all the residents in those, um, on those roads be able to at least comment, question and, and comment, um, would be, I mean, the best way to go, just to make sure that people were aware of what was going on. Um, Kel, Kelly, are you here for this?
Yes, I'm here for this. Um, Kelly Dozel, Fourteen Irish Lane.
And name it, yeah, please.
I live right at the intersection of Irish Prospect, Jamie Anne, where the roads do not meet. And we only, residents of the road, we found out last Saturday. We knew nothing about it. We were told, oh, this was posted, this was public. We understand how that works. Unless you know your roads and, you know, something's up, you don't go digging through the town website to find things. So, whether people want it or not, they wanna be able to say and have their questions answered. I'm someone who deals with drainage, driveways, stone wall and trees, everything that's listed in there. And our neighbors are concerned too. It's a poor road, it's a poorly maintained road. And anything else that's going to inhibit, we have no drainage. They put grindings down, that doesn't work. Um, there needs to be a lot of work done on the road and making it a scenic road is only gonna inhibit that. I understand the history behind it. I've lived here my entire life. Um, we would just like to have a say.
So, so is that how we left it, now?
So, I, yeah, we left, I think the discussion was gonna be, or what the recommendation was, that the Board of Selectmen was gonna actually vote to recommend that the Historical Commission hold a public hearing.
We, we, yeah, we talked about sending a letter, asking them to hold some. Jeff, do you have any comments regarding holding a meeting or? I mean, I know you can't, you haven't talked to the, the board or anything at this point, it's just
Yeah, I guess, so Jeff Stillings, lovely. Uh, can't speak for the board because we haven't discussed it. Uh, we did attend the last Planning Board meeting where it came up and I guess my position is, is still the same, that we had discussed it at Historical Commission and we outlined the historical reasons for, for that charge. And it's strictly to maintain the, the historic character or the scenic cha- character and quality of the road. So, that's where we're coming from, from, uh, the Historical Commission. We had presented it for inclusion in the annual Town Meeting, not the Fall, the, the annual. And it was requested, uh, through our chair to, uh, step it back for these hearings. And I too was under the assumption that that was a hearing, uh, but if that's not the case, then that's fine, I stand corrected. But we did meet in a joint session, the Historical Commission, with the Planning Board and, uh, we discussed where we came from. We were a very relatively new commission, we're taking our charge and responsibility seriously and, you know, coming at this from a historical, uh, perspective. And we explained the historical background with the, we had a nice discussion with the Planning Board and it's all public. And we did get the support of them for the inclusion. So, there is a, a process and that's Town Meeting. It's not the end-all, be-all. It goes before the people to say, "Do you want to include these roads as we have included Sassawanna, Mushkapag, Charnakil and Brittle in the past?" And we hadn't included a scenic road since the seventies, so, uh, and several Town Boards and Commissions can recommend for placement on the warrant to become a scenic road. So, uh, that's what we did. I can't speak for the Commission, I can't see why it would be opposed, but my initial, to a, to a public hearing, but my initial personally is that we've gone through every hoop that you've asked to do. Uh, we, we met, we discussed it, we drafted it, we presented it through the Board for the Annual Town Meeting. That requested the Chair, the Town Administrator, we s- we pulled it at request to meet with the Planning Board, which we did. We discussed it with them. I think as a commission, Historical Commission, I think we've done all the boxes that you've asked us to check. But if you want, you know, I think it should be added to the agenda of the next Historical Commission. I'm not sure what their feeling would be to have a hearing, a hearing for the Historical Commission or another one with the Planning Board or just leave it as the intention of the bylaw states before the people at the Annual Town Meeting or the Special Town Meeting. So, uh, I do believe there is some misinformation out there, so the public would benefit from some of their concerns and questions. I too am surprised at some of the responses. Uh, and I've talked to some of the residents on Irish Lane. One was concerned that we were changing the name of the road and having it paved. And I'm like, no, and no. No, this is about preserving the, the scenic quality and character of the road, nothing more. But yeah, the, this seems to have taken, uh, a, an awkward spiral, a different momentum of misinformation on what this was about. It, it really is nothing more of preserving, and Cloverdale, you know, something with deep history that should be, uh, preserved. It has nothing to do with repaving a road, renaming a road, uh, creating some sort of a scenic traffic down that road. So, if the public would benefit from an information session on what that is, that'd be fine. But I guess you, you should present that to Pete Pacer, the Chair, the three-hundredth and
Yeah, and, and like I said, that was, like I said, Ron, I, I, that was my concern, is I thought there was a specific public hearing for that issue, not just a regular meeting. I don't know, Leah, did you have a comment?
I was just gonna say, just if I may, given all the misinformation that I think we've all been hearing and everything, it might be beneficial, whether it's a, a public hearing or a public information session, to, to be able to present the, the factual context of what, what a scenic road entails and the process for which it is and why these roads were selected and everything. Um, I think I lis- I was on the Planning Board meeting when, um, Historical Commission was meeting with Planning Board and just that same dialogue as far as information and everything, and that could help dispel a lot of the, the wild rumors. And you can listen to concerns and hear those as well, but I think some of the, some of what I've heard, the concerns are caught up in, in the, the misinformation.
Yeah.
Um, I think there are some legitimate concerns also, so, um, I don't wanna discount entirely, but I do think that there seems to be so maybe having, I don't know if it's a hearing necessarily, but an information session or something.
So, a couple of comments. Um, the reason that I brought this to the, to Peter back a year or so ago is because I had a selectman who was really concerned about the impact on residents. That's why I asked Peter to do a public hearing at that time. And I said that, you know, I think it really would be good to do with the Planning Board, 'cause as you know, if, if there's a problem with a wall, you wanna make a change of wall, you gotta go to the Planning Board for the permission to do that, right? So, the Planning Board's involved in that issue, so I thought it would be good to do a joint public hearing of the two at that time. I must admit that I was under the impression it happened, 'cause I knew there was a meeting of the Planning Commission and the Historical Commission, and I thought that was a public hearing and later I found out that it wasn't in the minutes of meeting, even the listing of the roads. So, the general public would have, it was unlikely they would have attended the meeting, 'cause they wouldn't even known what it was about, right? So, that just came back to the, puts us back full circle, is to do the public hearing. I talked to the Town Planner about that and the Chairman of the Planning Commission, who felt that, now this is, Historical Commission is leading this issue, they think you got, the Historical Commission should take the lead on this issue in another public hearing. The reason I thought, again, why Planning should be involved is 'cause at the end of the day, it's Planning that has to make the decisions as to what to allow or not on the scenic road. Planning Commission ought to be involved, I don't care. As long as, to me, it's not important that the Planning Commission be involved, it's important that the citizens know what this means and what the ramifications of voting a road to be a scenic road is. And I agree with Jeff, there's a lot of misinformation and I, I, not to upset her or anything else. I'm not sure that I'm worried about, all of a sudden, there'd be a ton more traffic on there, but I don't think that that's what this is gonna do. But my concern is if she had a wall in front of her, she wanted to take down the wall and adjust it, that she, now she's gotta run to the Planning Board and get a vote for that. That to me is gonna be the bigger nuisance to residents, they wanna cut down a tree. To me, that, I think, is gonna be the bigger impact on some of these people. I think if you own a piece of property and you're subject to that person and the property to more review and go to the Planning Commission, they should know that before they vote at Town Meeting, right? So, I know there's a meeting scheduled. I, she told me that you guys, the Historical Commission already set the meeting date. I was kinda hoping that would be the review.
Um, and nothing has been posted yet. When we discussed with them last Tuesday, they mentioned a meeting on the twelfth, but that meeting hasn't been posted yet. I checked their website and there's nothing on the calendar.
So, Jeff, I asked David, I asked David to advise you, because the Planning Commission does public hearing, so they know how public hearing works. Like I said, the only difference, I think, in this is that the notification of a butters. What I would suggest you is, once you get that information, we'll post it. We would ask people like you and citizens to help spread the word, so that people know.
Well, we've been trying since we found out, but time is short.
Once we get a date, we'd ask you to help spread the word on that, the different streets and
Can you post it on the Facebook page? It doesn't cost anything.
Yeah, what's that?
Can you post it on the Facebook page?
Yeah, we'll post it on Facebook and the webpage, but what we can't do is, we can't do the budgeting. So, if you would be wanting to take it to neighbors and stuff, that'd be great. We can, we can develop some kind of thing.
We were waiting for the posting to give to neighbors.
David would work with the Historical Commission to, to kinda let you know the process for a formal public hearing, okay?
Sorry, I was gonna say, I also understand and hear Historic, the Historical Commission, I think the Historical Commission's concern is it seems kind of like this has been something they've been wanting for, to pursue for a while and it seems like it's been a moving target. And every time they think that they've, they've checked all the boxes, there seems to be suddenly another box. And it's not necessarily super clear communication between whomever as to what exactly boxes should be checked and how those boxes should be checked as a commission that has just kind of restarted fairly recently. I think it's something, you know, I think in, the periphery of our goals and objectives is opening that, those communications up with the different boards and commissions. So, I think it's just something we need to be mindful of, that working with these volunteer boards and commissions, we're expecting a lot of them and sometimes they need more guidance than what, um, you know, we have staff that works on our behalf and everything and they don't. So, um, if we can be more helpful, I guess, rather than
Right. And like, like I said, I, when Ron was talking about it and presented it to the Board, I thought, when he said, the public hearing, I thought there had been some kind of an informational public hearing that was, was provided. And obviously, that's important because we can't notify everybody on every street, 'cause there's several streets and it's cost prohibitive, but um, so that, so there was just a little bit of a miscommunication, but I do, I do feel that we need to at least allow the residents, um, an opportunity to, to have a discussion. So, uh, I don't know if, if this Board, if everybody agrees, if we wanna just, uh, ask that Ron, Kant, uh, send a letter requesting that, um, that they do a public hearing and, I mean, is that what you think, Jeff? That if we send you a letter requesting you do some kind of a public or informational meeting?
Yeah, I can't speak for the Chair, um,
Right, I mean, we, we can send you the letter anyway and do what you will.
It sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, one of the contentions we had, with all due respect, uh, at the Planning Board meeting is that, um, they said, no, Town Administrator's saying that the Historical Commission has to have a hearing. I'm like, well, no, we're an independent commission.
Yeah.
We answer the SLUCK Board, who are appointed and serve at the Willis Select Board. So, but I mean, if it sounds reasonable Uh, so, but I mean, if it sounds reasonable, I mean, it it, it's a board of volunteers, of reasonable people. Um, with, and there's no deeper agenda than what I just said.
So, are the votes should do this or just?
I mean, I, I kinda responded. So, I I wanna respond, Jeff, because you're absolutely right, that's what I said. And the reason I said is 'cause I heard all the comments of our selectmen being upset that there was no public hearing and people had a right to know. So I was, well, I was saying that we have to have a public hearing, because the reason frankly I felt that is I wanted to get it on a warrant for the town meeting. And I didn't, I didn't wanna be in a situation where the board of selectmen wouldn't vote for to put it on a warrant, because they ended up a public hearing. So that's why I said, you guys need to have a public hearing, it was more to protect than get it, the issue onto the warrant. 'Cause I'm not convinced that they would vote for it. And I can't speak for them, but I'm not convinced they would vote for it without a public hearing, to put it on the warrant for the, for the town meeting.
Well, and and like, you know, we've obviously determined there's a lot of misinformation, so we really wanna clarify before the town meeting or the entire town meeting will be discussing this warrant.
Look, could I just, if I may, could I just ask that, you know, town administrator and maybe the planner um work a little bit more closely to make sure that this is, it's done?
Yeah.
Just so, again, like I said, they're a board of volunteers who haven't necessarily been in existence for a long time to go through all the hoops again and again, so.
So that, that's why I talked to to David about this, I wanted David to help Peter go through this process so he knew. So David's lined up to generate, and frankly, writing a letter, no, I'm gonna call Peter tomorrow, talk to Peter, tell Peter what we have to do. And if he needs anywhere help, I'll help him, but this is, it's really not that hard to do, it's just a matter of picking a date, having it, it will help him publicize it, you know?
So, I mean, is everybody comfortable with that and pursue them?
Yep, excuse me, uh through the chair, do you have to, if it's a public hearing, it has to be public notification to all the butters, correct?
Yeah, no. I I think we could.
If it's a public information, you do not.
Right, I think we can do a public informational meeting and just do it through the website, Facebook and, you know, 'cause we can, we do not have the the funding to, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So that would be informational.
Just, just to be clear though, he's correct when it comes to a planning commission public hearing, you have to notify a butters. But this is not a planning commission public hearing, it's just a public, so a news, just a notice in the newspaper would be sufficient. But you're correct, if it was a planning board, you have to, we don't have to notify butters as under, you know, you do for planning stuff, but we don't.
Okay.
Point of clarification, how much time between the announcement and the actual meeting? Like from when the meeting is posted in the paper to the meeting?
Well, I haven't even, I haven't even talked to the chairman yet.
I know, I'm just, I didn't know if you had a set, you have to announce the meeting and you have to ha- give seven days' notice or something.
Yeah, we'll try to do it in two weeks, we'll get like two weeks and we'll start publishing it out and then. I'll talk to the chairman about it tomorrow, but we'll talk, we'll look at two weeks from tomorrow, something like that, and then we'll, we'll get the notice out right away.
Thank you.
And just through the chair again, just be clear, I'm not here to represent the uh historical commission, I'm here 'cause you, I'm answering 'cause you asked me. Uh, I was actually here for the three hundreds. So, uh, when I do speak, just as an individual member of that commission, not the board.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Understood.
Someone else suggested, is there any way to take um the recording and mark out the time that you you all addressed the specific streets? And you, we could, I mean, it's on website, I mean, it's on YouTube, so we could just make a link to it and.
Right.
We can, we can refer to those meetings as well, so people would also have access to.
So people can start looking at what was said even.
Republish it.
Right.
Right, I think it's just that we want to have our questions asked, I don't know what the.
Right.
Oh crap, but this will, this will.
Right, 'cause that's just, that's just informational prior, so it can generate questions or concerns, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Exactly, my thoughts, exactly, so.
Just more information for people, so. Are are we good? Is anybody? All right, thank you. All right, um, just on here, we mentioned that the Ron's annual review is coming up in November.
Mr. Chairman, just apologies.
Yep, no worries.
Uh, do you want me, there's a board saying they want me to send a letter, 'cause we, they really.
I I don't think we need a formal letter, you just work with them directly, right?
I'll take it.
Isn't that really comfortable with them?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I think, I feel like a formal letter sends, sets everybody a little prickly
I'll take that too, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
and I don't want it to be any more prickly than.
Yeah, I'll take it.
You can just communicate and work with them, I think, I think we're fine with that.
Yeah, I'll take it.
That's fine.
Thank you. Um, so Ron's annual review will be coming up in November, so, I mean, I know all the other reviews, it was months before we got anything through, so I wanna make sure we're kinda on schedule and actually Leah reminded me about it coming up as well, so. Um, I don't know if the board, are we comfortable with using the current for- format? I mean, I know there was a process for the um mid-reviews and then there was the the actual process for the final review and it's all, I think it was pretty much covered in in what we had prior. Did the, did people, you had a chance to review it as well too, Carol, right? You just didn't complete it, did you look at the review?
So, I I didn't.
Okay.
Um, so is, is the same thing that we just used?
For the last one, right?
The last one, not, is not a different?
And it talks about what you do with, you know, for a a mid-review and for a final review. Um, how about we take a a look at it, make sure everybody's comfortable with it? If anybody has any um concerns or or recommendations for any additions or changes or anything like that, um, let let us know by the next time we meet. And then if not, we will utilize that. Now, we will, did you wanna do the same type of a format? I know in the past, um, I think on a final review, um, the chair collectively took all the information and just kind of consolidated the, the, the the positives and and the improvements or anything like that and reviewed it. Or last time when we went through, we all kinda went through and made comments on each each area. I mean, what what is the board's pleasure as far as what you're most comfortable with?
First, go right through the chair. And I'll make all comments, all comments, one right there.
I knew Skip would be right behind me. Yeah, have the chair do it. I know. No, I I think that's what you guys have done previously, right?
'Cause we could draw it out for hours when we could do.
Yeah, yeah, no. So as long as everybody's comfortable with that and and sending it to me and I'll just try to consolidate it and then we'll, we'll share the information and then we'll, we'll just kinda review that information, everybody's good with that.
Anyways, for some reason.
And I didn't necessarily, I just, it dawned on me that Ron's year, with us was probably off the top of my head, right?
No, 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 it's just a reminder, I appreciate that, 'cause.
And I didn't want it to be like, suddenly we're in February and starting budget stuff.
Right.
So I don't necessarily, I personally don't have a hard and fast, it has to be done by a certain date, but just.
No, but it, I I do, because I'm a time person.
Right. Right.
And it it, the last one's just dragged and dragged and dragged.
Right.
So, I mean, we we are obligated to do the review and complete the review and should be done in a timely manner, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I wanna give Ron plenty of time. I know with, you know, special and everything coming up, that there's a lot on his plate also.
Yep.
So I wanna give Ron the ample opportunity to pro- provide his input also.
Right. So, and and it will be in November, so, and so we'll just start looking at at the review sheet, make sure everybody's comfortable with it, start to do our reviews, Ron can get information as far as his input. And then um, once we get it all, then we'll consolidate it and work towards the end of November to finalize it.
Of course.
Is everybody good with that? So, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Ah. Green Community Energy Conservation Grants for Weatherization Improvements to the Library and DPW, Vote to Approve the Contracts and to Allow the Town Administrator to Sign on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
So as you know, this is something we went over numerous times, this is the grant from, uh, that we work with, um, CMRPC with, for the Green Community Grant. This is all grant funded, this is all to save energy in the various buildings. The first one is the library, the other one is a combination of buildings, it's sort of a standard, um, contract. There's nothing exciting about this same contract used for other, other towns, uh, but it takes care of those, those buildings outlined in the two contracts.
And do we actually have a motion here, or is it we just use?
The motion, motion would be to, to have the town administrator sign the contracts for the library. The one contract for the library and the second one would be for DPW Public Safety Building and Community Center. And just give the town administrator the authority to sign those contracts.
If I may, just for clarification, these were ones that we had talked about, a a few times, we never actually had the contract.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, we talked about accepting the grants, that's why we, that's why you should be familiar with it.
Okay.
We accepted the grant money, this is the formal contract to do the actual work.
Okay, I felt like we had accepted something and it was like.
You already got, we're taking, we took the money, now we're gonna spend it.
We accepted the grants, yeah, we accepted the money.
Right, okay.
This is just actually doing the work, so.
Motion or whatever Ron's at.
Okay.
You know, this is.
So you're gonna be in this room, you do?
Yeah, I got you.
Yep.
Wait one second.
Rock eye.
Everybody. Okay, roll call, bar.
I do have a question, just to put your, there's no matching anything on this.
Okay, there.
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, this is great, this all, fight for, with the, with the work of CMRPC and we got the full answers.
Just, great. Thank you.
Part of the Green Communities Compact, which I think Margaret and.
No, this is not, this is not Community Compact, this is Green Communities.
Wait, I said Green Communities.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Green Communities, yeah.
Yeah, it's part of, so.
No, just, thank you.
Yeah.
You're right, there's a different round of grants last year than Mike did, this is this, another round, another year of grants.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh.
Pinoide eye?
Wait one eye.
And nickel's eye.
I said it first.
I I know, I thought you.
Didn't want you to beat me up.
Hey, I'm, I'm keep, I'm trying to keep you on check.
Yes, heavy pressure.
I'm getting tired, I didn't eat tonight.
I do.
All right, I don't know if we can quickly, if we have any updates on the, any of our goals and objectives? Anything new on Economic Development Committee, is what?
No, as a matter of fact, we gotta work more on it, I'm, I'm, still, we got the two people I got from my business list, but I'm still looking for other names.
We've got a market of those more than this.
I did send it out to other, to all the boards and commissions and I have not, I don't think we've heard anything back, so.
I've been talking to a few people and I think some of the buttons don't work, so I think they have to actually, um, like print it out and scan it. Like I think if you press the submit button, it doesn't always work to like automatically submit or something. I haven't gone through the whole process myself, so I can't um speak to that specifically, so.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, what I'm really looking for is anybody, is any recommendations for members? The two members that we got are, I think, really good, but we need to, we don't wanna make them wait for three months before we do this, so we need to get some other members on. And I'll also solicit some, some more people too, I've hit, and like I say, all the board of commissions, I've hit the business community, so, you know, you guys have better networks than me at town so far, so. Uh, but if you can think of anybody, and again, we're looking for people that might have some experience in planning but also have an interest in trying to promote businesses in town, so. Uh, that's the, you know, you're definitely looking for people who are positive towards creating a positive uh business environment in town, no matter where they're from.
We'd get some of those ag people involved too, their businesses.
Yeah, ag is actually.
Would you work on that one?
Yep. When do we get a time, any time?
I know, I know.
Yeah, that's the problem. Truly, an ag person would be really good, because one of the things that I wanna really explore is tourism through agriculture. And that would be a really key person to have, somebody that has that agricultural experience and how we unite farmers involved in this area. When I say farmers, I'm not just talking about playing farms, but agricultural ones, like Christmas trees and maple syrup, all those network. We need to get those groups all working together, so somebody from that group would be really positive. Well, I get a third person coming in, somebody I think, I gotta find out she applied, somebody from um, um, Four Corners. The one, one of the young ones at Four Corners might join me too, you know, a young girl who's the daughter of the farmer owner, who's now involved.
Oh, yeah, Nancy was. Yeah.
She was interested too, so I think, I think that could be my third person.
Yeah.
And I've reached out to a few people, I think they're, it's a busy time for them right now and so I think.
Right.
They're closing for the winter now, so they do have the.
No, no, not for, not from Four Corners, just in general, like, so I've reached out and, you know.
Oh, oh. She's leaving down.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And they're talking about pushing buttons, website?
I guess I'll be looking at P V R.
Yeah, fixing that button.
I do think it's specific, it needs help too.
Um, yeah, that, that, that's fine. Um, and I will be making uh the next meeting in the next couple of weeks, I would like to schedule one.
Can you add to your agenda for that meeting, that we need to um build a page for crumbling foundations?
Yeah.
Uh, and we need to take that, I think, that's gonna be pretty easy, 'cause I think we can steal most of the work that Trump did.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna have a presentation coming on, yeah.
And you may wanna take a look at the Trump website for that, but that is something we should build on our website.
We have somebody that's gonna do a presentation at an X meeting on that too, so.
Yep.
All right, uh, board, boards and commissions, um, we haven't really talked much about.
Well, we do now have some open spaces, so.
Yeah. And we had talked about trying to generate, whether we, we wanted to try to get people to rotate, you, you, you know, not get peop- not get people to go off boards, but maybe considering going on other boards and trying to change up some of the boards a little bit to try to get some new ideas and and some changes, so.
So it'd, it'd be good to do a little blast about the open, open spots in the areas.
Yeah.
So I think the library, um, I think I talked to Carrie briefly and she got some good feedback from one of the um southeastern communities, Marshfield maybe, about kind of like a town meeting boot camp kind of program.
Oh.
Um, to talk about that local government piece and everything. Um, so I think that the library is still working on that and I mean, I had said like, I'm happy to help as much as possible or whatever, just kind of, I know from boards and commissions wise, there seemed to be a lot of interest to have, uh, like a boards and commissions fair, um, so that the boards and commissions can present who they are, what they do, if they're elected or appointed, um, and everything also. So that would kind of tie into generating some of that, that fresh interest.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be a great way to try to get that, yeah.
Right.
Um, human resources, you know, Ron, you're gonna be doing, you're gonna be working on your reviews for the staff as well.
Nothing to report on that. Yeah.
And then, uh, we'll keep, keep looking at other, you know, vacancies and employment handles and stuff like that. And then we're gonna meet with the finance committee coming up on the fourteenth, I believe, to talk about annual, annual budget and financial features, so. All right, um, so, yeah, as a reminder, so we're meeting with uh FinCom on the fourteenth and we have on the twenty fifth the joint meeting with the AdHoc Bylaw Committee.
Oh, do we need to accept Mitch's resignations or it's just for notificat- I mean, written notifications?
Yes.
Do you guys accept under the most?
Yeah.
I know, yeah.
I'll make the motion to accept Mitch's resignation and with regrets, okay?
Do we have seconds?
Second, can I make, just from select, select boards, CIPC and ConCom, I think we're the three.
Oh, to, oh, all resignations.
We can't, we can't do that. Each board has to, each board has to work.
But we're the appointing authority. I don't know, I don't know, I, I don't know.
Okay, fine, fine, but I, fine. Add the other two in there, but it's supposed to be explored.
But we do usually, we do usually see all the, all the resignations for the committees and and then usually.
That's right. Yeah, we do, but it comes from conservation and it comes from.
So you're waiting, you're saying that they, they need to report it to us first and then we have to accept it?
Yes, right, that's, that's how it's always been.
Okay. I don't have, I don't, I don't have a preference, I just wasn't sure, we have all three letters specifically, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
So those letters are supposed to go to the commissions that are on there, that he's, that he's been on.
And I, I honestly don't remember, I, I.
Well, why don't we at least accept the selectmen's and then we can table.
I'll, yeah, I'll make it, I'll accept all three, I don't care, but I mean, it's procedures we used to have.
We go on the part. Yeah. I mean, we do have, we do have all the letters, I don't think that the other committees are gonna, are really gonna care that we accepted it, because he's not gonna show up. He's not gonna be there.
Yeah, but that's.
I think that the ConCom already acknowledged it.
They did?
Documented it many minutes at the last meeting.
Okay. Yep.
Oh, there you are.
Hi, Peter Green, it's way again, um, it is the town clerk who declares the vacancy, which she has now done.
Right.
So you can accept all three right now, because that's the process. In fact, town clerk notifies each of the boards.
Right.
So there's no prob- problem with with accepting the resignation from all three boards.
So I accept all three of them, why not, conservation, CIPC?
All right.
Wait one second.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Pinoide eye?
Wait one eye.
And nickel's eye with regrets.
And thanks for service, too.
And thank you for the service. We gotta encourage these people to go on committees, so we gotta look like we appreciate it and. So they're gonna say, oh, they're gone.
So we're gonna send us all back and take from the chairs of each committee who we're gonna, who they want back in there?
Right, it's up to the, each committee to fill positions and then make recommendations.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause it wasn't that way at your work a couple years ago.
Oh, no, you, yeah, the committee would make a recommendation and present it to the board.
Okay.
I mean, it's, everybody agree that that's gonna be the process?
You gotta make sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Peter?
Kind of false on board's voice, I mean, my decision, but yeah.
Right.
Right.
Um, on, on another topic, uh, I'm getting deaf and forgetful and I don't remember you folks acting on Sean Moore's request.
He, he, um.
Oh, it, it, he, he, he actually couldn't make it again, so he.
Oh, sweet, postponed, okay.
Yeah, he, yeah, so that was postponed.
He postponed.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good call, 'cause I forgot, it's not on our agenda in our document, and so, so I completely forgot.
No, it's not on our agenda anymore, yeah.
Oh, it's off yours, 'cause it's on the one that's posted.
Yeah. Oh, okay, yeah, 'cause, yeah, he, he called in and and canceled, he couldn't make it, so, but thank you. All right, are we good?
Roll start.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Eye. Next thing to say.